I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before this meeting, we did have an exec session of the Board of Commissioners. All Commissioners were present, and we discussed personnel and litigation and real estate matters. Just for anyone, if they're here for Biomed, they asked us to remove that from the agenda and put it back on for our May meeting, so number E will not be discussed tonight. We have a consent agenda. Does any Commissioner want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Raise your hand for the second. Jim, you got the second? Okay. Any member of the public want to remove anything from the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Pass is seven to zero.
Before we leave that, Steve, when you get a chance, if we could see the, for the paving resurfacing, if we could get some, a schedule that we could send to the constituents as far as the paving?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Booker. So, the contractor will be notified tomorrow that the contract has been officially awarded to him. There is an August 1 drop dead, dead to date for this project, so as soon as possible, I get his written schedule, we'll post it and send it to the board.
Okay, now we have letters of accommodation and recognition. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first officers I'd like to bring up would be Detective Chris Gluck and Officer Steven Solinsky. And if the lieutenants could accompany them, please. Ladies and gentlemen, and Commissioners, one of the problems we had in the last couple of months is we had a rash of thefts remotos where during the nighttime, people would go into cars either by forcing entry or by pulling on the door to see if the door was open, and then they would go in and they would ransack the vehicle. In the area of Willow Avenue, back in the end of March 2015, we had a series of 10 of these types of thefts remotos. Now, Officer Steve Solinsky right here, he responded to one of the thefts remotos, and he noticed that there was a flashlight that was sitting on the passenger seat of the vehicle. He asked the owner if that was his flashlight. He ascertained that it was not, and he preserved the evidence. What he did after he preserved the evidence and packaged it correctly, it was turned over to Detective Chris Gluck. Detective Gluck was able to dust the flashlight for fingerprints, something like you'd see on CSI if you watch television, and what he did was he submitted those fingerprints. We have a system, it's nationwide, it's called AFIS, it stands for Automated Fingerprint Identification System. And what happens is when you put those fingerprints in this system, if a person ever had a criminal record, it would make an identification immediately. And sure enough, when Detective Gluck put these fingerprints into the system, it popped up with a hit. He was able to identify a suspect, he put the information out to our officers. This individual was grabbed by Radnor Township Police. He was brought in, and subsequently, after he was mirandized, he gave a statement and he admitted to all 10 of the thefts remotos. So it's outstanding heads-up police work by Officer Solinsky and by Detective Chris Gluck, and they are hereby commended. Thank you very much. The next officers I'd like to bring up, we did honor one of the officers in private session because of his status, that he works at times undercover. He's a sergeant with the Radnor Police Department, so he was already commended in exec session. At this point, I would like to bring up, that would be Officer Maticezak and Officer Bates. And if I could just take a moment, too, I'd also like to bring up, Officer Mark Bates has two of his children here. He has Justin, who's 11 years old, and Kelly, who's eight years old. And I spoke to them before because I wanted to ask them if they know what kind of a hero their father is. And I asked them a couple of questions, and they're very intelligent, so they definitely take after their mom, who's sitting in the audience there, Alyssa. But I asked, we're going to do Kelly first. I asked her if she knew what CPR was. And you want to tell everybody what CPR means?
It is a chest compression to keep the blood pumping.
Excellent. And I asked Justin, who's 11 years old, if he knew what an AED did. He had a little bit of trouble pronouncing what the letter stood for, but why don't you tell everybody what it means?
Automatic External Defibrillator. It produces electricity to the heart to make it start.
Excellent. And just so you know, their mom is a EMT? Paramedic. Paramedic, so that's where they get their knowledge. But anyway, this was January 24, and this was at the Villanova Conference Center. I couldn't think of the location earlier, I apologize to the Commissioners. And we had, Radnor Fire was already on the scene, and they were trying to resuscitate an individual. The sergeant that I mentioned earlier, along with Officer Maticezak and Officer Bates, responded. They immediately started to do chest compressions, utilized the AED, and assisted the medical personnel in any way they could. And from my perspective, as a law enforcement officer, there is nothing more significant or more life-changing than when you have an opportunity to save someone's life. So, having said that, and again, I want you to see what a hero your dad is, I would like to commend Officer Mark Bates and Officer Maticezak for heroism for saving a person's life. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We'll now move to public participation. Does anyone?
One more.
Oh, one more? I'm sorry, did I miss one? Oh. Recreation, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Commissioner Nagel, for coming down here. Tonight, we want to recognize Villanova University, and if Brian Anderson and Chuck Young, if you guys could come on up. These guys are from the Villanova University's Facilities and Management Division, and what I want to do is I want to recognize these guys for all their support, and Villanova University for its continued support, two years now, on behalf of the Spring Extravaganza Event that was held on March 29. It's in its fifth year Villanova has supported it for the last two years, and I want to thank them, believe it or not, for an egg hunt. This is actually a region-leading event. There's actually 30,000 eggs down on that field right there at Villanova Stadium. It was attended this year by approximately 3,000 people, as it was last year, too. Villanova's been great, a great partner. They provided the staffing, logistical support, some security, as well as the Wildcat, of course, came and interacted with all the kids. So I want to take an opportunity to thank them. It's been, our department has been proud to work with them the last two years, so thank you so much for your continued support of this great community event.[527.66][527.66](applause)
Now we'll have public participation. Seeing no one, we'll move on to committee reports, public safety.
That's me. First item we have for introduction ordinance 2015-04 regarding stop intersections, adding a new stop intersection for Oakford Road, Arbordale, and Creek Drive.
You make a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance.
Second?
Second.
Any Commissioner comment, public comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is seven to zero.
Next, we have the introduction of ordinance 2015-05, which is to rescind a handicapped parking space on David Drive. I would like to move to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
Second. Any Commissioner comment, any public comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pass is seven to zero. Now we'll move to Public Works and Engineering.
Thank you. The first item is the presentation by, well, Mr. Scott and his counsel for the approving the Ardrossen subdivision planting berm. I think this is in lieu, a berm in lieu of particular types of landscaping materials.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is John Snyder from Saw Ewing. I represent ES3LP, which is the, developer's kind of a hard word to say with respect to this development, since it's a preservation development, but in any event, this deals with the Rye Field buffer, which is a 100-foot buffer specifically with the four houses that are before things go over the hill. And at the time, the landscape plan was approved with the final subdivision plan, there was a planning plan for that buffer, and the question of whether taller trees should be submitted or what. And we made the offer at that time of, we went and found the cost of the taller trees at $40,000, and we made an offer to provide that $40,000 to the township so that if taller trees were wanted, or more trees were wanted, they could be put in. In the course of the final engineering and the getting the NPDS permits and the soil erosion control permits, we are aware of additional fill that's at the site. Now, we have two choices with that. We can, we have somebody that would be more than happy to take it off, but we investigated trucking that up to the Rye Field berm, shaping it into a, what is an 11, average 11-foot-high berm that would follow up the slope, make it 11 feet taller, do the planning on top of that berm. It's all native soil to Ardrossen, and that way, we would immediately have 11 feet more in the buffer plus the ability to then plant in kind of the way that we had proposed and that your arborist had suggested is the more appropriate way. So it would provide a stepping up of that hillside. And we provided the berm section, or the plan view that you see, the one that's up on the board has the plannings on it, the one that was submitted earlier, I don't believe, had all the plannings on it. And I do have 11 by 17 copies of this plan with the plannings on it, if people would, if any of the Commissioners would like it. And then, secondly, on here is the cross-section, which is admittedly a little hard to see at this scale, so maybe they could focus in maybe on any one of those areas. And you would see that because of the berm, the planning is increased by the difference between the dotted lines. The effect of the plannings immediately is increased by the, by that dotted line there. So that we dramatically change the immediate nature of that, the effect of that berm. In addition, there is a condition that still requires that those four plans come into you, so that this doesn't change that. It just allows us to do this berm in lieu of the other planning. It's more expensive to us, as provided in the explanation letter, it's over $85,000 to do this berm. It's nothing to have the person come in and truck the extra fill away, so it's, this is not a cost savings in any way. We just think it's a nicer, better job. We've constructed the berm so that it's not a hump that's in the middle. The high part of the berm is more back toward the road, so it's more of a gradual slope up and then a bank along the road, which will allow us to put flowers and stuff like that along that road, shrubs along that road for our people as we go in, but the trees will be enhanced. So that's what, it's a revision to your subdivision plan, subdivision approval because it provides for the berm, and it requests that the $40,000 be used to offset some of the cost of this. So that's the request we're making.
So, can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
The actual planting list, has that changed?
No.
Okay. Is this, and when our arborist reviewed this, he saw, has it changed, it must have changed in location?
The locations have changed slightly to take advantage of the slope and therefore be more on the slope going up as opposed to on the downside of the slope.
But...
Could you add in that the county arborist actually recommended a 3% reduction for original number of trees? We might have missed any trees.
The, yeah, it's in his letter of his recommendations was that actually the number of trees be reduced by 3%, which is, I think, only like four trees or six trees or something like that. It's not a big reduction, but it's a reduction from his standpoint to accommodate those trees in a better fashion as they mature. He's here, he could certainly speak to that.
Okay, and did I hear you say that the planting plan has changed since you submitted last week?
No, no.
No.
The, I wasn't sure whether what you received as the plan section on the one you received had the trees on it, because there was an original version that just simply showed the grading of the berm so that it was easier to read what the, what the grades were. Yeah, yeah. That's what I'm saying, is you can see the difference between that one, which is simply the topography, and this one, which is the topography plus the buffer plannings from the subdivision plan overlaid.
The infrastructure that may cross over, under this berm, so are there any sewer lines or water lines or anything that are planned for over there?
As you recall, this was the buffer, and there were no structures or anything permitted in the buffer. This area is just a buildup of the soil in there. There are no storm sewers, there's no sanitary sewers in that, in that buffer area.
How about water? I had, is there any water?
There are plans for water, for water will be in the street. It will not be in, it will not be in that area. There is a stormwater management area that's tucked down in this area along the plan with a discharge point in this one corner. It's out of the, the structure itself is out of the buffer, and is certainly nowhere near the berm.
So you're not aware of any water lines coming onto this land at all?
Correct. There will be water brought in to serve these houses, and that water line will be in the street.
Okay, but how is it getting from the street to the houses?
It will be coming in from Newtown Road. The water line will come down to the street, and the houses are on the other side of the street from the berm. The water line will come down the roadway here and will serve these houses.
And has there been any discussion with the gentleman who farms that land, whether he has any water needs coming onto that land?
There's no water there now, as to my understanding.
Right, but if there are water lines coming in, if he would want, you know, a spur off of that?
No, there's not been a discussion of that from, with the trustees or with the tenant or with anything like that. Nobody's raised that question with us.
Okay. Well...
Obviously, by the way, if there's a, if there's public water in the street and service is wanted, and you want an easement across the 100-foot buffer, there's no reason why we wouldn't.
Right, and that's what, I'm just anticipating that, I would imagine that would be desirable, and it'd also be desirable to do that before you put the berm in.
Well, if you look at the buffer, I mean, getting into the field at the northern end of it, where there isn't the, where there isn't the berm, because you're over the hill...
The water's not coming from the farming complex side, it's coming from Newtown.
It's coming from Newtown Road.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I am very supportive of having a berm there. I think it only helps in terms of blocking the view. I'm pleased to see that it's the same planting plan, basically, and I think it will enhance and help with the view shed issues when and if those four lots are developed. However, I don't see the logic in foregoing the $40,000 set aside. The set aside was really to guard against what if things don't turn out the way we want them to turn out, and what if later down the road, these trees don't take the way, you know, in any, and we can still see everything. We have this money that we can enhance planting. And I, in my opinion, we still have all those what ifs, even with a berm. We're still going to have those what ifs. And I, you know, we felt comfortable at the point we approved this, knowing that, you know what, we'll see how this, it all looks good on paper, let's see how it all turns out in reality in the next few years, and if it doesn't turn out the way we want, we have this little cushion to enhance it. I would feel uncomfortable taking away that cushion. I understand that the berm makes it more probable that things are going to work out well, but we also don't know what houses are going there. So I would be very, very hesitant to forego that cushion because of the berm.
You realize, though, that there's, without the ability to use that, the incentive to build the berm is not there. I mean, it's going to cost us $85,000 to build the berm. It costs us nothing to have the party who is interested in the, in whatever fill we have to come in and take it. That's their cost and their expense. So this is simply an added $89,000, $85,900 cost, without any relief to us of the additional $40,000 for what would have been bigger trees with the question of whether we should have had 10-foot trees or 20-foot trees. This is a different way and a more expensive way of resolving that issue, and we're bearing the additional $45,000 in cost to make it $129,000 or $25,000 is really of no incentive to do the berm.
Well, I'm sure that if it makes more economic sense for you to ship the fill off, then that's what you'll decide to do. But, you know, that's fine. I, my opinion is, I mean, my point is, we've invested a lot in this view shed. We want to make sure that it is adequately buffered, and this $40,000 that we negotiated and agreed upon gives us a little, it gives us a little confidence that if we need to tweak it, we can. And without it, even with the berm, if we, you know, the trees don't take, or, you know, five years from now, it's, the berm has settled and it doesn't give us the protection that we want, then we're left having to pay for it ourselves, the enhancement. And so I, you know, I don't see that we would give that up.
Okay, well...
How high is the berm now?
The berm would be 11 feet.
And what are you proposing?
No, there is no berm otherwise. It's planning at ground level. We are proposing to add an 11-foot-high berm.
Yeah. Well, Lane, don't you think spending $89,000 to put the berm is going to be a lot better than planting trees? To add 11 feet there?
We're all, we're planting trees either way, the same amount of trees.
I understand that, but if you're going 11 feet higher, you get the right-sized trees in there that'll have a better chance of growing than bringing in the big trees and all that.
Maybe, maybe.
So I would suggest that they continue to escrow the funds, the forty-some thousand dollars in funds, only because it's a well-known fact that trees that are planted in berms have less likely, are less likely to survive than trees that are planted on flat ground, because you're creating an artificial berm. The root system has a very difficult time traversing through that berm into the soils where the water is. There is no water in berms, okay? In general, berms don't hold water. It drains out. So I've seen this in a lot of other developments that we've done. The trees that are planted in berms end up falling over dying three years later, and then we're stuck. So I would just suggest, just to escrow the money, and we'll move on. If you want to do the berm, I think we are saving you some, allowing you to keep the soil on the site is saving you some complexity.
Oh, no, it's much more complex and includes much more permitting to build the berm than it does to...
Right, but then you don't have all the, you don't have all the requirements of street sweeping that we would impose on you to clean the streets every time one of your trucks leaves that site to carry dirt to some other location. Because that's what we will require. We will require street sweeping.
Well, that's okay, but quite frankly, that's, the cost is clearly much more expensive to us to do the berm. Much more. And, and, you know, without the $40,000, to do it plus the $40,000, I don't, I'll talk to my client after we're done, but, I mean, if you want to approve it one way or the other, and then we'll determine whether it makes economic sense to do it.
Mr. Snyder, could I confirm one thing? In our materials, I have a memorandum from our township engineer, Janet Fleming, of April 17. I have our arborist memorandum, the same date, that's Rockwell Associates, and then I have Mr. Fiorello's drawings showing what the plan is. But am I correct, there is no official or informal proposal from Mr. Scott to effectuate this?
Oh, no, there was a cover request for approval of it.
Is that it?
Yeah, it's in the packet, it wasn't, it's not attached to this, but it came in a packet, correct? That's my understanding.
I'm sorry, yeah. I do have your other...
So there's not a resolution, it would just be approval of that item?
That's correct. It would, it would be done by a grading permit. It's not, I mean, there's no improvements, so that there's no, it's really...
There's no formal modification of the plans, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. It's done by a grading permit.
But you are, you were coming here requesting a modification to the agreement for the $40,000.
That's correct.
Which is not covered in this, so we would have had to have some sort of...
Or it is covered in the letter.
Well, I mean, I think we would have had to have some sort of, anyway, I don't think we're going to do that anyway, but...
All right, so, well, the two members, does anyone else?
I'll tell you my sense of it. I'm agreeable to it, I'm kind of neutral to it. Part of, part of this for me is we had a process, and this plan survived our process, and the $40,000 escrow survived our process, and so for me, I'm inclined to stick with that. If that, how it affects your decision-making, I'll leave that up to you, but my inclination at this point is to maintain the $40,000 escrow as we had indicated previously. And then, did our plan, did this plan go through the Shade Tree Commission? And should, I mean, if a decision like this, should that go through Shade Tree Commission? I mean, part of my hesitancy for not relieving the $40,000 escrow is that presumably that survived a process that included the Shade Tree Commission, and I wouldn't want to circumvent that.
This plan was discussed at the Shade Tree Commission.
The second one or the initial one, or?
This berm?
Yes. So did they give us an opinion? I didn't see an opinion on that.
I think it was basically what was coming from your arborist, but Steve?
Yeah, I brought John Hoss back here tonight, in case the board had any questions, but my recollection is that the Shade Tree Commission did not have issues with this. I would like to ask Mr. Snyder one question. So, just for my identification, your excavator is willing to haul this dirt off-site for free? All the spoil from your site, some 15,000 cubic yards? Is that, but they're going to charge you to keep it onsite?
No. My understanding is that we have a third party who is willing to truck that off at his expense for the use, for the, for the soil, which is not an unusual situation in it.
It's a very lucky situation, because as a former excavator, to actually marry those two items, where somebody wants it and you want to get rid of it?
Yep.
That's a one-in-a-million shot.
Well, that's what our situation is, and we thought a berm was a better solution, and so we talked to our contractor about the cost of him moving it from one part of the site to the other part of the site, shaping it, and... the site to the other part of the site, shaping it, and creating the berm, and that is an extra cost to him.
I have two questions, first of all...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is, you know, everything that we're doing at Arderson, we're trying to do as well as we possibly can. It seems to me that I remember when we were here saying that, you know, we wanted bigger trees, but the experts in the field, the arborists said, "Don't use bigger trees, because they don't have a big enough survival rate." So we set this $40,000 aside for trees or trails. And since that decision was made, we've discovered that we have the capacity to raise the level by 11 feet, and to put the reasonable-sized trees as recommended by your arborist and by my people on top of that, clearly making a better situation. But like everything else we do at Arderson, it's expensive. And so we're asking, rather than, since there obviously aren't going to be more trees, and in fact, the recommendation is for less trees, we're saying, can't we spend, instead of spending the $40,000 on trees, can we spend it on the berm? And, you know, make what everybody thinks is a very positive, on a crucial view shed, that we're all interested in maintaining. And it's sort of like, you know, otherwise, we go down the road, and, you know, maybe the $40,000 finds some way to get spent, or maybe it just gets spent on trails, but this is the thing that was such a focus for you in particular. And, you know, my people, your arborists, agree that this is a better situation than not doing it. So we're really, we're really asking not, you know, maybe we need $40,000 to spend on more trees, because they're not survival, because whoever plants the trees guarantees their survival for a while, right? We're really saying, this is an important piece of infrastructure, that'll be better, and make the project a better project, it's just not trees. It's better than trees, it's a berm, from a visual standpoint.
I think we all agree on that, we all like the berm, we all agree that this is probably going to give a better chance of true buffering. And I think everyone agrees with that.
Yes.
What's not obvious, to me at least, is that there, because of this berm, we are definitely not going to need more trees down the line. I don't know that. And the $40,000 that we discussed was not, you know, for trees or trails, it was for trees.
That's what it says, but that's what it says, trees or trails.
Trails, if it turns out what we plant is perfect...
We're going to take your $40,000, if we don't spend it on trees, we're going to spend it on trails.
Right. If it turns out what we plant is perfect, then we would find, we would have plenty of other places to spend it.
So...
But we don't know that. We don't know what this is going to end up looking like, and we don't know what the four houses are going to look like.
Who are professionals in this are saying that this is a good thing to do.
Got it, agreed.
We understand, Mr. Scott.
So, we can help each other.
So, and I think you have the votes to approve this tonight. I just don't think you have the votes to forego the $40,000 in escrow.
Mr. Chairman?
We would need a resolution in our packet to rescind an approval, prior approval, we can't...
Yeah, I would think so, since it was...
We're not asking you to change it, we're asking you to allow, instead of trees or trails, to add...
But Mr. Scott, we would need a resolution in our packet tonight to vote on, that actually says that, that takes the language out of the original agreement...
Yeah.
And supplants it with something new.
And that's really a question for John Rice. John, we would, I mean, this was approved by a plan with a resolution, can we make a change of this significance without a resolution?
We should probably introduce the gentleman that you referred to as John Rice. It's Jonathan Rice, and it's, the last name is spelled differently than R-I-C-E, is it not?
That's correct, it's R-E-I-S-S.
Okay, thank you. With the firm, Grim Bean and Thatcher.
You could approve it if you wanted to tonight by a motion, but I don't, I don't believe, listening from you, that there's the votes to do that, but you could do it by a motion tonight.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the changes to the Arderson subdivision planting plan for the addition of the berm, but that we do not forego the $40,000 set aside.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just on this, and I guess not to be adversarial or not with the board, I think that, you know, for the amount of money that the board has spent on this, not knowing this $85,000, I have a difficult time seeing how you're going to spend $85,000 more, because I think there's a tremendous advantage to the developer. Who is the firm that's going to take, buy this prop, buy this extra material, and take it off-site of what that is? I think the board should know who that is, of how that's going to go, because again, if you're making this decision, I find it hard to believe it's going to cost $85,000 more. I think there's a cost savings for this. I believe there was money to be set aside for the trail itself, because we were looking on Newtown Road there, of the trail that the board wanted, so I think that's separate to this item.
That's a separate, that's a $70,000.
That's correct, that's separate to the $40,000, so...
We're getting off on the wrong tip.
I don't think it is.
Yeah.
I think it's very clear of where that is, so I think...
All right, well, I have a couple of questions here.
Wait a minute, let me just ask something. John, you don't want to motion approving a berm that you're not going to build?
Well, you can approve it, but we'll then decide whether we're going to build that or do the plan as originally approved.
Well, we approve it, do you have to do, we approve?
No, you don't have, we don't have to apply for that grading permit.
Okay, all right.
So, my question is, how did we arrive, or how did you arrive at the cost of $85,000? Where's that number come from?
Bid from our contract.
Is that a bid, or is that going to be a change order request? What exactly is the document?
You can't speak for the, you cannot speak for the audience.
All right, I mean, if you don't know, just so we don't, you know, just, that's what, you got that number?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm fine, if you want to approve the motion and not approve the $40,000, okay.
Yeah.
We, the entire team and your staff, thought that this was reasonable, I believe that it's reasonable, I'm trying to do the best thing that I can, I'm already paying in for trails, because, for one reason I can't figure out, but I've been trying to be as cooperative as I can, and I, honest to God, after all this time, I really, really believe that this is reasonable, right? We have multiple solutions that don't cost us a lot of money. We can spread the fill on the property, you know, okay?
Well, the problem is, the sense of the board is, is that they'll approve the berm if you want to put it in, but they want the $40,000 to stay in escrow.
I know, and I think that's so, because it was such an important point.
If that's where the votes are, we can't change that, I can't change that, sorry.
And also, I think that, we've heard several of our professionals also make the case, our view is that it's likely to, in the end, when the project is all weighed in, and all the costs are totaled, that this is going to be a benefit to your earthwork contractors. They will be able to, they could be able to, at least, so, we don't know for sure what it's going to cost, and we do have a concern with changing the grades in this location, it could affect the trees, so I see no reason to forego the pittance of $40,000.
Commissioner Booker, I guess.
Let me finish, this is a small amount of money, we're happy to have, waste this fill onsite, the guys, I'm sure, are, there's plenty of leeway in the schedule for people to have this work to do, there's some costs, there's negotiating, negotiations that need to go on for this whole project, it's a piecemeal project, sites at a time, we're happy, so we, I view the berm as acceptable, however, I'm not sure that it's going to cost anything, and I think that there's a persuasive argument that it won't cost anything at all. So I would agree with the movement, the motion from Ms. Schaefer.
And Commissioner Booker, what I was going to say was, I guess you will find out whether you're right or wrong by whether we do it, and I think you'll find that this isn't a bluff of saying it's going to cost us money.
We don't, we don't think you're bluffing.
Okay.
And don't, I mean, you know, there's no reason to threaten the board, either.
Oh, I'm not threatening the board.
So we have a plan, let's do the plan, let's do the berm, you, I think you're right, you've heard where we are on this, but let's have public comment, maybe the public will be persuasive.
Well, I want to weigh in on this. First of all, the origin, the reason we had the 40 grand was to assure that we had adequate buffering. And then, at the last minute, we threw in, or it would go to trails. I would have no objection to still escrowing $40,000, and then, once in some reasonable time period, you're assured that the buffering is working as designed, then you release the $40,000 back to the project. Not give it to a trail, if you will.
Also, this is such a miniscule amount of money, these are million-and-a-half-dollar sites, I mean, so, this is just a pittance, I don't know why we're arguing about it.
Well, I can count, and the votes aren't here, so let's hear what the public says, see if they can change any minds here.
Sure.
We appreciate it.
Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road, I followed the buffer for a long, long time, and it's dear to my heart, as it is many of you. First, I think we have to all remember that the entire township chipped in 11.6 million, or whatever it ended up being, okay? So, and it was essentially to preserve that area of that view shed, and we were very disappointed that we didn't get the larger trees, because just like Mr. Scott did say, or whoever said it, that if one fails, you have a replacement with your shemins, or wherever you buy your trees, that would go for the small ones or the large ones, but we didn't get the large ones. We all wanted the large ones, but we had the arborist say, the small ones, for some reason, this development, unlike any other development in Radnor Township or surrounding townships, the small trees had to work here, on no other development. The developers all have to put the larger trees, or per caliper, to their shade tree. We were all disappointed that that didn't happen, so we already gave. And another area that hasn't been mentioned is, and 3% is 3%, because you had a plan, and why are the, now the number is going down, and it's still too much. If you notice, in the lower area, if I had the right sheet, it's still sparsely planted, so why don't we also ask that 3% that's overplanted, for some reason, be put down in the lower portion that was underplanted? I'm sure that they would, you know, we would like some more trees down there, since 3% is only, what, six or eight trees? So I'm for the $40,000, because you never know, and also, I think, I'd like everybody just to think a way, you're taking a natural view shed, which I know Mr. Scott loves, and we all love, and you're artificializing it through a berm, and it may get to blockage, but it may look, when it's put there, totally artificial, and then we'll be like, why did we do the berm? So thank you very much.
Any other public comment? We have a motion, was there a second?
Yeah, there was a second. Quick question, though, the motion has to have the flexibility to do either or, correct? It's not, we're not approving the berm, we're approving the capability due to the berm, or stick with the original plan?
Right.
Correct?
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposing, anybody else opposing? All right, that's a five to two. Okay.
There was that other letter request with respect to the timing of the...
You need your mic.
There was the other letter request with respect to the timing of the payments, the 12th lot, six-month issue.
Yeah, I mean, my sense is, the staff should bring that to us with a recommendation. Does anybody feel differently?
I'd agree with that, I think that we should talk about that a little bit, there was some detail to it I want to understand.
All right, staff will come to us with a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the preliminary approval of Villanova University's housing project, dormitories, and performing arts center, garage, and retail shops. I think the applicant is here with us tonight.
Before we begin, I'd like to announce that I will not participate in this discussion or vote, because I have a conflict of interest.
Evening, Nick Canilia, representing the applicant, Villanova University. We did receive the suggested resolution, we do have some comments to that resolution. Actually, many of these comments were made at the Planning Commission, as well as the caucus meeting before the Board of Commissioners. It affects the comment letters from staff, and the reason why is that the comment letters predated both the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners meeting, so I really think it's really just a case of them not having an opportunity to be removed. And so if I may, I would like to go through the resolution as it is, and perhaps some minor modifications that we would make to it, as I said, most of it has to do with the comment letters themselves, that I think are issues that have been already resolved. Remember, the comment letters, the issues we're talking about here aren't waiver requests, except for the two that are mentioned here, they are actual requests from the township staff regarding certain comments to the site. The first one is on the whereas, the third whereas, it lists a number of surface parking spaces, and actually, that number is not accurate, and my only comment there would be, just remove the number, and instead, if you're removing the number and delete it, it says, "and surface parking spaces" as set forth in the plan. So actually, the plan specifies how many surface parking spaces are there, and all that we're requesting is you remove the 147, because the 147 is not an accurate number. It may have been a number that was on a prior plan, but it's not on the plans that have been submitted to the board.
So it looks like you have 62...
That's correct.
...surface spaces, and then you've got visitors, and...
Correct.
The existing lot has 240.
Correct, what we have, we have 62 in the CICD, we have 48 spaces in the visitors' lot, and then 240 in the West Lancaster lot, and that's what the plan shows. So as I said, I think the best way to handle it is just remove the 147, that's all you would have to do, because then it says, "and surface parking spaces" as set forth on the plan.
And the plan gives us that breakdown?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I would like to go to the Gannett Fleming letter, and this is a letter from Gannett Fleming dated April the 7th, 2015, and I refer to a couple of the comments. The first comment refers to the stormwater management, and it's, as I meant, and it's Housing Section 3, Comment 2, again, this is the Gannett Fleming letter, I believe, on the Gannett Fleming letter, it is... Just so we're referring to the same one. I, yes, it's Section 3, yes.
What, are you on item number one, under the now there for?
Yes.
Okay.
And my only comment there is, except for the following, shall be deleted, I would add, and these are the comments that we believe have already been resolved. The first one is on page, I actually don't have a page number, but it's a Gannett Fleming letter, and it's under Roman numeral 3, Stormwater Management, and it talks about number 2, and it says, "Stormwater MPBs must be able to completely drain within 96 hours," and my understanding is that is inaccurate, that's not the requirement, and I believe Mr. Phillips had agreed with that at a prior meeting of this board and the Planning Commission as well.
All right, you're talking about Exhibit A to the resolution.
That is correct.
All right, now that, that number says 100, Roman 3, subsection 2.
Comment number 2, right.
From the letter, it says, "The dewatering calculation indicates the 100-year condition requires 103.56 hours."
And I have to, unfortunately, I have to call Alex up on this, it's getting a little too technical, go ahead.
Yeah, the issue really is just in the wording, he refers to, "The 100-year condition requires 103.56 hours to drain," and we brought this up during the caucus, and also during the Planning Commission meeting. The standard is the groundwater recharge volume has to drain in 96 hours. So there is a 96-hour drawdown time, it just inaccurately references the 100-year storm condition, that's not the correct storm. So that, that's the issue, has to be removed.
Okay, I'm probably comfortable with the technical part, I just can't find it on the page, so that might help.
It's like page...
Yeah, it does have...
Also, it gives a fourth page.
Keep going. One, two, three, four, five, fifth page, Exhibit A.
Fifth page, middle of it, Roman numeral 3, Stormwater Management, Comment 2.
What is the, what is the correct storm?
Uh, groundwater, it's the groundwater recharge volume. It's not really a...
You're taking out the 100-year storm?
Well, actually, I think does, does...
Well, we comply, he, he brought up, we submitted a report that showed that that storm drained down in 96 hours. The 100-year, they say, takes longer, but it's allowed to take longer. So, there, there should be no comment, because we already comply. Yeah.
Okay, so the, so the thing to do is not to try to wordsmith it, but to eliminate point number 2, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
And, Nick will get into it, but this comes up a second time, so it'll be the same discussion.
Well, well, no, we do have to wordsmith it, because the, this is, uh, the, now therefore, paragraph 1. The applicant shall comply with April 7th correspondence, except Roman numeral 3, sub-paragraph 2.
Correct. And what, and I think you almost have to put Housing, or, or, the way I worded it, Housing, comma, Section 3, Comment 2.
Item 3, Nick, the dewatering calculations for the infiltration, infiltration system 202 indicates that the 100-year condition requires 113.45 hours for the volume to completely dewater. Stormwater BNP's must be able to completely drain within 96 hours, so that's the one you're talking about.
Yes, number 2.
It's, I have it as number 3.
Yes, Roman numeral 3, Comment 2.
Okay, all right.
Roman numeral 3, Comment 2.
So we're taking that out?
And staff agrees with that interpretation?
It's all, guys, it's only relevant for our resolution, right?
Yeah, we're not changing the letter, we're changing, we're changing the resolution to...
To exclude that from the approval?
Now, therefore, the first paragraph we'll read after Exhibit A, except for paragraph 3, uh, section 2.
What, this is the, what is it, the habidemdom? What is, what, how do you pronounce it? Okay.
And Steve Norsini, do, do we agree with that interpretation of the stormwater requirement?
That's correct, and I, I have Matt Scholz here, Roger did concur, and Matt does also.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
I have a draft version, if you want me to hand it up, this red line that shows some changes, I can hand it up, I can go up individually.
I don't think that's necessary, do you?
Okay, all right, fine.
This is for the citation. This is the citation, it's Roman numeral 3, paragraph 3.
Comment 2. It's Roman numeral 3, Comment 2.
Well, what Mr. Norsini just read was...
No, it's Roman numeral 3, yeah.
Comment 3.
That was the West Lancaster...
The confusion is this comment shows up twice, which is why Nick was saying we have to reference Housing, Section 3, Comment 2. And then it comes up again in West Lancaster Parking, Section, Comment 3.
And I'll get to that.
So Mr. Norsini was talking about the West Lancaster version.
Thank you for clarifying.
We'll get to that one. The next comment is again, looking at Gannett Fleming's letter, underneath that Stormwater Management, you see West Lancaster Parking. So referring to the portion of it that says, "West Lancaster Parking." And there's a couple of comments that Villeneuve is not doing anything to, uh, certain areas. And there are existing nonconformities, and we're not changing those nonconformities. And, um, the letter mentions that a waiver is required from that. We don't think it was a waiver is required, I did confirm with John Rice, the other John Rice, that he also felt that a waiver was not required there. So we're just taking out the fact that a waiver is required to continue existing nonconformities. And that's on the West Lancaster Parking, Section 2, Comments 2, 3, 4, and 5. Again, as I mentioned, there are existing nonconformities that are not being changed, or not affected by this development. The next item is the item that Steve Norsini referred to, was under West Lancaster Parking, Section 3, Comment 3. It's the same thing regarding the 96-hour drawdown that we discussed as to Comment 1. The next require, the next item was on the Pike Field Garage, Section 1.
What item are you talking about?
It's Gannett, it's on Gannett Fleming. It's, um, it's listed under Pike, his review of Pike Field Garage. And it's Section 1, Comment 2. And it talks about, uh, buildings, the way the ordinance reads, the ordinance reads that you have to have an articulation in the building, and it specifies the type of articulation in the building. It doesn't say that you need separate buildings, in particular, we're talking about the parking structure itself. And so we're just adding clarification that that's not really relevant. Obviously, Villeneuve has to comply with all zoning requirements, no matter what. And we're just saying that the parking structure itself, doesn't have to be separate buildings, it has to have articulations, which the plan does show. The plan shows the articulations that are required by the zoning code.
And articulation is a set off, isn't it?
It's a set off.
Instead of a flat facade, you have to vary it every 180 feet?
And, and in the CICD, it actually specifies how much of a set off you have to have.
So, if, if this is already complied with in the plans, why do you, what, why do you want to exclude it from the resolution?
Because he says the individual buildings must be clearly identified on the plans to indicate conformity with this section. This is number 2 under zoning.
Understood, and that's true statement, the individual buildings must be clearly identified on the plans to indicate conformity with the section.
Well, I don't, what I don't know is he asking for, that the parking structure has to show individual buildings, or the individual buildings themselves must be identified.
The way it reads, it says, "All buildings and parking structures shall be a maximum of 180 feet." So, and, at any moment, when you're more than 180 feet, according to this, it's not enough to show that there's an architectural offset, but there does, there must in fact be walls separating the garage. But is that, is that, we need staff to comment on this.
And I don't know if that's what he means on that, and again, we discussed this, we, we discussed it previously. And we stated that it's regarding articulations. And again, this was raised before Planning Commission, and before the board, um, itself, as well as our, our comments to the review letters.
So what does the staff say, we can remove that? What, what, what are we doing here, Nick?
My understanding is, is that the staff said that it was able to be removed.
Well, John wants to hear him say that.
Oh, yeah, we need staff to tell us that.
Also, and staff may as well comment on the other, the one before it, sub, paragraph, uh, Roman 2, and you excluded 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, I think.
Yeah, these were nonconformities, or, just so you know, these are existing nonconformities.
Again, so there are existing nonconformities, I, I just, typically, we wouldn't have, these are pretty big changes. It's not just take out 147 and pass the ordinance. It's a pretty big change, is typically, we'd have these all buttoned up, when you bring it here to us for approval.
And we don't have Roger here tonight.
Number 3 was...
Who's the author of the letter, so...
Number 3 was, the number 3 waiver was going to be for the nonconforming parking, it's not here now. And the reason it's not here now is because Roger says we don't need it.
Um, I, I spoke to John Rice, and John Rice said that, since it's an existing nonconformity, you don't need a waiver for it. That's why it was removed, otherwise, we would have asked for the waiver.
Excuse me, um, I spoke with Roger Phillips, he's all right with the, uh, removal as there are existing nonconformities going onto, uh, item B, which Nick was discussing. He was also all right, uh, with the removal of the 96-hour drawdown, which we had discussed previously. And the, uh, the garage comment is that, um, there's no requirement that individual buildings may only be 180 feet, the requirement is that no unbroken facade shall be 180 feet. And we are okay with the remove, with what Nick is, uh, saying we should, how we should proceed.
How about the nonconforming parking, that's where we are now.
So what about paragraph 2, the page before, Sections 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6?
They are existing nonconformities that do not require a waiver.
Okay, fine. All right.
So, moving on down, the next item is again, similar to the Pike Field Garage's Performing Arts Center. Same comment basically was made in Roger's review letter. And again, our understanding, I think it's been confirmed now, is that it's not a requirement, the buildings, uh, be 180 feet, but that the art, but that the articulation be 180 feet. And that's what the plans show in Performing Arts Center as well.
You jumped ahead, Nick, did you...
I had Pike Field, I'm sorry, um, that's right, I did jump ahead. There is an item on Pike Field Garage that says, "The height of the parking structure shall be 38 feet," which is accurate, "and three stories." That requirement is actually in the PLO, that is 38 feet, I believe it says, "or three stories." That is not the requirement in the CICD, the CICD does not restrict the number of stories, just says that it cannot be higher than 38 feet.
That's correct, the 38 feet is what is allowed in the CICD, but as Nick stated, there is no requirement on the number of stories.
Where's that again, I'm sorry?
That is...
Performing Arts Center?
Performing Arts Center, Section 1, Comment 2.
No, garage.
It was the Pike Field Garage, it was item E.
Excuse me, Pike Field Garage, Section 1, Comment 5. Section, Roman numeral 1, Comment 5.
Okay.
And then, the item after that was the Performing Arts Center that we talked about, about the facade, which is Section 1, Comment 2, on the Performing Arts Center. Comment G talks about the church walk and bridge. And I believe this is regarding the dark sky requirements. And the church walk, the dark sky requirements under the code is for the CICD. The township has other codes regarding lighting that are controlled by other codes of the township. Um, in this instance, the church walk and the bridge, which remember, are elevated, are not part of the CICD, and therefore, are not part of the dark sky requirements. And so that's why the request for that is that, again, you know, that it's not part of this CICD, and therefore, should be removed. And in all fairness, this was all discussed, my understanding was, there was no issues regarding it, it was discussed with Mr. Phillips, and it was discussed before both Planning Commission and...
So again, Mr. Phillips agrees with this?
Mr. Phillips agrees with this.
Can, can you get us to that location again?
Can I?
Nick, I couldn't follow.
Church Walk and Bridge.
Um, I, I, I have done something...
Section 1, Comment 2.
I have, there's no page numbers on this.
No.
It's 13-page letter with no page numbers. So I have hand, maybe everybody on this board should now put page numbers on this letter, so that we know what we're agreeing to. Because all this is going to be put into a motion, and we have to know what we're voting on.
I, I, I think it's too much to put into a motion, this should be cleaned up before we approve this.
I'm very uncomfortable with this whole process. This has been a, a three-year process, and, and, and the lead engineer, and our solicitor that was in place for three years, isn't here tonight? This is ridiculous to me.
So Nick, will you, uh, will you come back? Would you be willing to have this redone, come back in one meeting, it's two weeks, it's not the end of the world, it was three years to get here.
These are comments, we received this, I believe, the middle of last week, we reacted to it properly. All of these comments have been discussed, not only before the Planning Commission, but before this board. These are very, very minor changes that everyone, that the staff agrees to. We would request the board move forward with this, it's not, it's not...
But the Gannett Fleming letter is 20 days ago.
It was before the Planning Commission, and before you met.
And you have other ones?
And our, our solicitor did send you a copy of the resolution?
On Wednesday or Thursday, I believe.
Okay, so then you can appreciate the stress we're under, trying to make this decision right now.
And that's why I understand too, John, as I said, is minor comments. There's, I think I have four more comments, or may, there may be a couple, I have, if I may, if I may just, the final, the church walk one, and, and again, if you want to, may, perhaps we should number them, I can certainly number the pages, and we can refer to it.
That's what I've done. Church Walk is on my page 11.
I'm calibrating to you, Jim.
It doesn't matter, Church Walk and Bridge, Section 1 zoning, paragraph 2, and light fixtures, starts out with. And basically, you strike the whole, all these, you're saying, strike these in, completely? Or they're, they're not, they're not at all referenced in the ordinance? They're just totally out, they're not corrected.
So, they are, they're referenced to some, what, the plans reference all the requirements of both the SALDO, in addition to other comments and requests that were made by staff. These are comments that have been resolved, to our understanding. And therefore, to clean up, the ordinance should be removed from the ordinance. Again, I can go through probably on the page numbers now, also, if, if you feel more comfortable referring to page numbers in addition to the, the actual sections themselves.
Could I hold you, um, on something? On the dark sky requirements, you're using a technicality by saying that the bridge and church walk are outside the CICD. But would your applicant not be willing to comply with the dark sky association requirements for church walk?
They, the reason, the reason why they can't is, remember, is elevated, and they have to light the elevated portion of the bridge. And in that regards, I believe the dark sky requirement, and Alex can address it, is like 100% has to be down, I believe.
Yeah, and for the bridge specifically, the issue is more of a safety issue from our lighting designer with concerns on the bridge. Because it's a bridge, and there's parapet walls on the side, dark sky requires no uplight, and 100% of the light going down. From a safety perspective, on that enclosure of the bridge, the lighting designer feels that the industry standard and the guidance and safety protocol says that light should shine up, so that you can see the faces of people walking back and forth on that bridge. So inherently, you can't light somebody's face on that bridge and be dark sky compliant. So from a safety concern, he wants uplight, and the dark sky requirement isn't required, because it's outside of the CICD. So, in that case, for the bridge, we don't want to meet dark sky because of the safety concerns with lighting the faces of people on the bridge.
I, I guess I need clarity, why don't we, so do we light faces of people walking on sidewalks? And if, what is the difference between the sidewalk and a bridge?
I'm not the lighting designer, and unfortunately, the architect's not here yet, he might be able to speak to it if he shows up. But I think my concern, the, my understanding of the situation is because it's the narrow elevated walkway, you know, when you're spanning that bridge, from a safety perspective, if you see someone coming for you, if you're on the ground, you could go somewhere else, but when you're on the bridge, you're stuck on that bridge till you get to the other side of the bridge.
Okay, but, but the, okay, so we, this is a waiver of sorts.
No, it's not, it's not in the CICD.
The code doesn't apply.
It's not, okay.
Matt, you've indicated, or you've spoken with Roger about this, and Roger agrees with...
Roger agrees with, with that.
Nick's interpretation?
Yes.
Thank you. Nick, that was just for item 2, correct? 3, 4, and 5 still apply?
Wait, actually, can we back up on that? You stated that this is not in the CICD, do you mean the bridge is not physically located in the CICD?
That's correct.
Are you saying that the side of the bridge that lands on the south side is not in the CICD? Is it outside of it?
For the ordinance, if you remember the ordinance, you had to specify a specific portion of your property that was between 10 and 15 acres, and identify a line that is that district on the plan, the bridge is outside that limit.
Any others?
The... On page 12, Section 2, Comment 1, this was an existing nonconformity again. It talked about, um, under church walk and bridge, the minimum dimensions of parking aisles for 90-degree parking is 22 feet. The aisles and the existing visitor parking are less than 22 feet. Um, and again, and he asked for a waiver on that, and we've already discussed, it's an existing nonconformity, not requiring a waiver.
And, uh, Matt, Roger agrees with that?
Roger agrees with that as well, existing nonconformity that does not require a waiver.
I'm sorry, this is in the, um...
This is on page 12.
Yeah, I see that, uh, which, which lot is this?
This is the visitor lot, near the church walk.
Okay, and that lot is remaining?
That lot is remaining.
And not being...
Yes, not being...
Regraded or anything?
Right, yeah, it's remaining as is. Right, yeah, it's remaining as is.
I'm sorry, I was talking with our manager for a minute.
Subdivision land development, Section 2.
It's Page 12, subdivision.
Exit Drives, the exit drives?
Number 1.
Oh, number 1.
2.
What are we doing?
Roman numeral 2, number 1. Again, this is an existing nonconformity.
That's it.
And it is not requiring a waiver because it's an existing nonconformity.
Thank you.
All right, speaking of that, can we go back to Page 6, the subdivision land development, Paragraph 2? We have the same issue right there, so, in each one of these paragraphs, it says, Paragraph 3, 4, 5, 6, in Paragraph 3, it says, "Parallel parking spaces must be 18 feet." Then it says, Paragraph 4, "The visitor lot must be revised." Same thing for 5, "The visitor's lot must be revised." And then, Paragraph 6, "Feral Hall must be revised to include a sufficient backup area." Now, I don't remember specifically waiving that, and you're saying, "Well, it's nonconforming now," it's technically, you're saying, "These are all outside of the CICD, they're nonconforming now, so we're allowed to keep them." Notwithstanding what Roger wrote here, and by our, somehow, this board has approved every one, deletion of every one of these comments?
These are existing nonconformities under the law, and by the law, they're allowed to continue. Roger's comment was, he wasn't disputing that they're allowed to continue, he was stating that a waiver is required. He, since that period of time, we've had legal opinion that a waiver is not required, and that's my understanding on why Roger now agrees that a waiver is not required.
What was our legal opinion on that? I don't recall. Can you refresh my recollection on why a waiver?
I had, I had discussion with Mr. Rice, John Rice, that is, and John says, "Since there is existing nonconformities, a waiver is not required." What he's talking about is a waiver under the SALDO. No one is disputing, these are legal existing nonconformities that can continue. It's kind of semantics on whether a waiver is required, or whether a waiver is not required to continue the use.
Well, I think it's more than semantics, because our engineer said these must, you know, it's not considerate, must be revised, and you're saying, "Well, they were, it's existing nonconformity, so we don't need a waiver, we don't need anything," and Roger's "must" should be disregarded, and I'm just not following, I just disagree with that.
Roger changed his opinion, ask the?
Well, well, I guess it's, and what I'm hearing is, Roger changed his opinion after John Rice talked to Nick, and this is the first we're hearing of it.
These are letters that were submitted by the staff, review letters, prior to the planning commission meeting, prior to this board meeting, prior to us having a chance to respond. Now?
So what we're missing is a letter from Roger, kind of him rescinding his original positions. We need another letter from Roger, and we don't have that. I don't have that, and I'm sorry.
We don't have anything from John either.
I'm not comfortable voting on?
John said something about it.
My suggestion is, we finish the list, and then we come back and have a discussion about whether we should vote.
I think I agree, we should finish the list, and then we have to go back and discuss, or confirm, or throw out your position, Mr. Canelia, one by one, and then come up with something that I hope you'll be free to vote on, no or yes, and everybody else will be free to vote on, no or yes.
This is, the next letter is Exhibit B, which is the Gilmore Letter, and this would be on Page 4 of the Gilmore Letter.
Okay.
And it's Roman numeral 6, I'm sorry, Page 5 of the Gilmore Letter, it's Roman numeral 6, Comment 4. And this, again, this is not a SALDO requirement, it was a request from the township engineer, the traffic engineer prohibiting right turns out of the CICD on Itham, and Villanova cannot agree to that. The reason they cannot agree to that is those trucks have to get to South Campus, and they would come in, they would go into the new housing project, and then make a right turn out that driveway. If it can proceed under the bridge, it may can earn the bridge, it will proceed under the bridge to South Campus. And that was the only reason really why we did not agree to the signage prohibiting trucks from turning right onto the driveway to continue on to Itham Avenue. Again, it's not a, it's not a waiver requirement, it's not a SALDO requirement, it was a request from the township traffic engineer, and we've agreed to a number of her requests as well, but this one we just cannot agree to.
Are you able to show that those truck-turning templates are able to make that turn without encroaching on the corners or any of the other travel lanes? We're going to need to see that.
I'll turn to Alex on that one.
I don't think that it was shown on the picture, or the templates.
If that's requested, we can provide it.
And that'll show the stop bar location of the left-hand turn lane also?
Wrong intersection.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I don't think there's a left turn stop bar.
So, can I have the, what would be the language that you would need to be satisfied, Amy?
I think you're going to need to add it to the resolution, and it would be to adequately show right turns from the parking lot. Let me see if I can find that location. You know what, I can work on crafting that and come back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, sorry to be on the spot.
So I know, we're at the top of Page 5 of your letter, Amy, correct?
But I didn't have the note in there, so we're going to be actually adding something.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking that we would be deleting that note and then adding something to the resolution. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, the note you would delete is Paragraph 4, at the top of Page 5?
It's Section 6, Comment 4, right.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
The next item is right below that, Section 7, same page, Comments 1 and 3. Again, these deal with existing nonconformities, and again, the item here is revise the design or request a waiver, and a waiver is not required because they are existing nonconformities.
Amy, do you agree that they're existing nonconformities?
That's a, that's?
This is Gilmore, correct?
Could you repeat?
This is Gilmore's letter.
Which one are you on right now?
This is Roman numeral 7, 1 and 3, dealing with the nonconformities.
Gotcha. You're at the resolutions.
Your Page 5.
My Page 5.
Gilmore Page 5, 1 and 3.
Alex is like?
Then John Rice, the legal position is that if they are existing nonconformities, no waiver is required?
That's correct.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
And these are existing, Nick, this is an existing, referring to number 1?
I would have no opinion on that. That would be something, I think, for the solicitor to determine whether or not it's nonconformity.
The opinion I think that we would need from you would be whether?
That they should meet the conditions of the ordinance, that would be my opinion.
She says revise the design or request a waiver.
But I think the opinion that we, the technical opinion we would need, whether the, the information is accurate.
The information is accurate.
Right, so it's just a legal opinion then as to?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so John Rice, all right, but again, this is the same thing. Amy says revise the design or request a waiver, and, and John Rice and John Rice say, "No, you don't need to request a waiver."
Yeah, nonconforming.
Or revise the design. And the basis is that it's in the, I'm still missing what the legal justification is, why you don't need to request a waiver, notwithstanding that it's existing nonconformity. This is a new ordinance that we passed. Why not conform or request a waiver from complying with the ordinance?
Is that a question to me?
Yes, it is.
But it, my understanding is, this is a pre-existing condition, it's not changing as a result of this work, so therefore, it's nonconforming as to the ordinance, but it was conforming when it was built.
So, and Nick, is this is outside of the CICD's area?
Yes, mhm.
Yeah, so this is all existing?
Right.
Structure, pre-existing conditions, however, will be used differently?
It's not, nothing's being changed in those lots.
Okay, so these aren't access points to the new lots that are going to be?
Yeah, nothing's changing.
Alex?
You're altering the circulation on the site, and you're altering the accesses to Lancaster Avenue.
That's why I'm asking, is this drive in question, the aisle between Stone and Feral Hall, is that, is that aisle going to be used for a different purpose than it is now? And I think Amy's saying to me that this is part of some different circulation that will occur as a result of new construction of the new parking areas along, you know, the south side of Lancaster Avenue.
Yeah, these parking lots are not being touched as part of this project, they're actually outside the limited disturbance of this project. They're on the West Lancaster lot, if you remember, there's eight lots that are being consolidated into one, and there's parking lots being built. But we're stopping the parking lot east of Stone and Feral Hall, we're reconnecting so that they can still access those driveways when we close the single driveways, we're closing all the driveways along the road. So, we're building a new single right-in driveway, and then allowing access from that driveway into these parking lots, but those physical parking lots are outside the project area, outside the limited disturbance, and aren't being touched in any form, so they're remaining exactly as they are today.
Except, not, but they're not, because they're having a new entrance, and they're being utilized in a new layout. And that layout is necessitated by this project and the relocation of the existing park project, existing parking that would otherwise have been in those areas.
Well, the issue is, is that they could have left those three driveways and not made it any part of this project, but it's better for all of us if they close those three driveways and go out this way.
All right, well, let's just understand what we're doing, right? Let's not say, "Oh, we don't need to do a waiver." Let's say, "This is what it is, this is what we think, this is how, this is the analysis, and this is why you should approve it anyway," notwithstanding. Don't just say, "You don't need to do anything."
Amy, could I have some, I think you want to say something.
I always want to say something.
Please say something.
I'm just of the opinion that they are altering the access to Lancaster Avenue and changing the flow on site, and in my opinion, this is the time to bring these things up to current conditions and how they should be operating. That's just my opinion.
I agree with that. I think that's the issue I have with this, even though, the goal here is not to, to, let me say it this way, even though these lots will not physically change, they will be changing their use and the way they're used, and the fact that you're going to have students parking in that whole section back there, and having access to all this, these lanes are not to code, to the current code, they're to a very old code, and they're 18-foot lanes, and I think we don't want to waive this, I think this is something we want to keep, hold them accountable to do.
And I think that it's appropriate, notwithstanding that the exact physical pavement isn't changing, there is a significant change as a result of the project which necessitates either a waiver or a change to the existing physical structures.
All right, what else?
I'll move on. The last comment on Amy's letter was on Page 7, and it says, "Traffic impact study," and it's Roman numeral 13, Comment Number 3, and they talk about mitigation on Lancaster Avenue and Spring Mill, as well as Lancaster Avenue and Itham, and in fact, Villanova's already agreed to this mitigation by contributing toward the traffic adaptive systems. So, we feel that this has already been resolved, it's part of the conditional use application and conditional use approval, and Villanova's already committed to do that.
So that would be on Page 7 of Amy's?
Page 7, Roman numeral 13, Comment Number 3.
It says, "Level of service comparisons, provide mitigation for the degradation of critical movements where there are more than 10 seconds additional delay and mitigation where there is a 10, more than a 10-second additional delay between no build and build scenarios."
Are these, Mr. Canelia, are these self-deleting then?
Yes.
So is there any action you're asking the board to take?
No, we just believe they should be deleted because she's, we're not really, it's, the comment is saying, "Provide mitigation," and we've already provided that mitigation through the contribution to traffic adaptive systems.
So it's?
Otherwise, it's been open-ended, that we just have no idea what it would be.
So these two, your position is, these are subsumed by the signalization, traffic mitigation?
That's correct.
Question about, I'm sorry, Jim. Is there a, is there a requirement in a code to require something like this? Is this, I could put for our staff and for me?
Not specifically written out in that fashion, the language in there talks about level of service degradation.
Right.
The 10 seconds that we're talking about here is based on PENDOT methodology for looking at these.
Is there, is there a requirement in any of our codes that you have to mitigate the, that, my understanding of the code is that it requires you to analyze it and provide recommendations to address it, but there isn't, it isn't a, like a design threshold that if you don't satisfy it, you're, you can deny an application based upon it?
I don't think it's spelled out specifically the way it's worded right here. Like I said, I was following the PENDOT procedure, since these are PENDOT roads.
So, then, John Rice, any, do I understand it correctly? I'm under the impression that a, that, you know, unlike Stormwater that says, you know, infiltrate this amount or meet this peak rate, that there's nothing in our zoning code that requires you to restore and mitigate? And then Nick, you can give me your opinion on that too, I'd be interested to hear that.
I'll check your zoning ordinance right now for that, I wasn't prepared for this particular question.
I believe the ordinance says make recommendations, is what the ordinance provides.
I believe it also discusses, identify improvements and the cost for those improvements.
Right, so it's not a design criteria, it's not a threshold, the MPC requires you, if you're going to deny something, the MPC requires that you identify the provision that is the inconsistency. And do we have a provision that this is inconsistent with?
No, it's not a SALDO requirement.
Don, is that something you're asking for, that these are too few that are in here? Are you saying we should have more?
No, I'm saying that we don't have any. That, I understand traffic is not a, the way Stormwater has a numeric criteria, there is no numeric criteria for traffic. What there are, what there is, is a, a recommend, a procedural process, and you follow the process, and the output of the process are things like recommendations and mechanisms, but it, but it is not a criteria that is used for a, it's not a numeric criteria that can be used to deny an application.
Okay. What this says is that Amy requests, Amy specifies in the letter, "To get the approval, you must provide mitigation." It's not a numeric criteria that needs to be met. It is a statement, mitigate the degradation of the traffic in these locations she specified. Nick's view is that we are contributing $175,000 to traffic, traffic light system, to a control system, and whether that mitigates it or not, we don't make any comment, but we don't, we want this out, because we are not going to be committed to mitigating the traffic in those areas. And I think that that's the key point, is this board willing to accept, on behalf of this client, Mr. Canelia's, taking this out because he is making no commitment to mitigate traffic? He, they are providing money, and whether it works or not, it's on us, not on them.
That's what we approved.
I, and that's, that's what this board, that's what your question is, not what I approved, it might have been what Commissioner Spengler approved.
I think you've mischaracterized the issue, I mean, I see the issue differently. I see it as, there's a numeric criteria, 10 seconds, and you have to mitigate that, and I don't see, I don't know where in the code, in our code, there is that requirement.
I actually found the section. If you look under? If you look under Section 6 for the TIS discussion, 255-20B5, Transportation Impact Study, and move down to Bracket 6, Conclusions and Recommendations of Improvement discusses anything below level of service C is deficient, followed by Item E, "The Board of Commissioners may decide that certain improvement contained in the study honor adjacent to the site or required for preliminary plan approval and, if acceptable to the applicant, may attach these conditions to the preliminary approval."
So, again, we're talking, so the way I read this, Amy and Don, it says, "Provide mitigation at intersections where there is more than a 10-second additional delay." It doesn't say, that just, the 10 seconds relates to intersections where mitigation must be applied. Amy goes on to support that statement, saying that the board, as a condition to approval, may attach specific mitigation elements if acceptable to the applicant.
Well, and but what he's not, he's not, we don't have a specific, other than the specific we came for, he's saying it's a general statement, it's not a specific. So we can't approve a general statement, we have to approve specific and we aren't doing one specific.
Exactly right. And Nick's specific statement is, "We are not promising to mitigate anything."
That's not what I said. And I think everyone's, if you talk to all the traffic experts, they're in agreement that the traffic adaptive signalization will help mitigate the traffic at these intersections. As a matter of fact, the intersections mentioned are the specific intersections that Villanova agreed to contribute toward.
All right, well then leave the provision in. What are we arguing about?
Because it is a broad statement as to mitigation. It says, "Provide mitigation," doesn't state what that mitigation would be. If it stays, "Provide mitigation by contribution to traffic adaptive systems in the amount of $175,000," to which Villanova has agreed, that's a fine statement.
Okay, fine.
But we already agreed to that. It's already in the conditional use. We have to do it. It's in the conditional use.
So your concern, Nick, is the, there's the ambiguous thresholds, threshold or the lack of a threshold?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
What if we tried to link the $175,000 to Roman numeral thirteen, three, five, Romanet five? So it would, something like, "Apply the $175,000 previously committed to assist," and then you go into the language that she has in Romanet five.
And we've already agreed, I believe we agreed to three signals. It was Eithen Avenue, Churchwalk and this signalization here at Lancaster and Spring Mill. They were the ones that were designated in the conditional use as where the contribution is going. So, Jim, I guess you can say it that way. I don't think it's needed because we already agreed to do it.
I think for our constituents here, we want you to mitigate it. We don't care if you spend $175,000 or $175. The point is that it be mitigated and just because you spent $175,000, that is no guarantee or warranty that you're going to, you're going to meet this. Now you're saying, "Well, we're going to do something, but take it out anyway." I think, Counselor, that you are contradicting yourself with your statements.
I have to totally disagree. Conditions have to be specific.
Stop, stop, stop. You have to, you have to be specific. So you don't have any specifics of, you just can't say mitigate. The ordinance says you have to come up, for preliminary approval, you have to come up with specific things, okay? And we only have one specific thing we approved of. There's nothing else specific other than, say, mitigate, you know, spend a million dollars, $20 million, just mitigate the whole thing. That's not what we're doing.
He's not agreeing to mitigate, he's just agreeing to spend $175,000.
Amy, Amy, can you-
Because we only agree to mitigate, you agree to specifics.
I need, I need some feedback. Amy, the ordinance you quoted, 255-20, does it put the onus on the applicant to do the study and determine the, identify the solutions and identify the costs?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Which we have done in our traffic report.
One of the other things I do want to point out, if you move further down in the letter, and I'm not really sure what, if this is going to be acceptable, but moving down to Lancaster Avenue and Eithen Avenue, there are a couple things that we were looking for at that intersection. The queue analysis for the eastbound right turn lane at Eithen on Lancaster and also lengthening the southbound Eithen Avenue left turn lane.
And I believe we have no objection to that. We did not, we're not objecting to those items.
What about the auxiliary lane for the right-
We have not, the only items that we're objecting to that, the last comment I had for your section, Amy, was what we're referring to here, Roman numeral thirteen, comment number three.
So, Amy, this is Roman numeral thirteen.
On page seven.
Table one, on page seven. It spells out Lancaster Avenue and Spring Mill, Kennelworth Road and Aldwyn Lane and then also Lancaster Avenue and Eithen Avenue. Are those the roads, and I don't have the list, are those the roads that were included in the three intersections that Villanova agreed to?
Yes, they are.
Minigate? Okay, so I-
And then there's additional improvements that are going to be required for Lancaster Avenue and Eithen Avenue.
Okay.
And we have, we have not objected to those. We understand they are conditions to the approval and we're not asking they be removed.
It just bothers me that you're concerned that you're, you want to take this out because obviously you're not convinced you're going to mitigate anything and you don't want to be held to that standard.
You need specific standards. It is not specific.
It is specific. Mitigate it where there's a 10-second delay. And you're saying, "Well, we're not, we won't say whether we're going to mitigate anything."
No.
You're not pulling anything over on me, Nick, come on.
Hold on, guys, we do, the resolution has to contain specific conditions in which the applicant will agree to, and those conditions do need to be specific. So in a sense, like, it would have to say to widen the road, add a turning lane, add an adaptive control system. In this case, the applicant has agreed to add the adaptive control system to that intersection. Amy, do you feel that that is adequate? They've, they've agreed to add the adaptive control system to that intersection and will that in fact mitigate the 10-second or more delay?
For the Lancaster, Spring Mill, Kennelworth Road, Aldwyn Lane, yes. For Lancaster and Eithen, if they're agreeable to the discussion on the right turn lane and the southbound extending that left turn lane on Eithen, then I would find that that would probably mitigate.
Okay, so, sorry, right turn lane, this is southbound Eithen?
The southbound left turn lane on Eithen at Lancaster Avenue.
She has it down, I believe they're already down there as three and four.
They're the next items. Okay, so you're in agreement to take care of the next items that are already here and you're not trying to get a waiver on those?
Correct.
So, I would, I would argue that this is, that this language can be, we can dereference it, whatever we, this is not even the resolution, by the way, this is a letter.
Right, this is the letter, this is an attachment.
That's referenced by a resolution. So in the resolution, I have to tell you, this is getting very complicated because if we were just modifying a resolution right now, it'd be easy. But what we need to do is dereference certain clauses that are located in letters that are referenced by the resolution. I think we need a whole new resolution that's written out with all these very specific terms and I, you know, I'm just going to say it again, I know we're going to get to the decision later, but I'm not comfortable voting on anything that is this loosely coupled. This is very-
These, these are all exhibits incorporated by reference into the document.
Can we finish this before we move on?
We're going to finish it.
Sort of general-
I was trying to save us time because if we end up, if the applicant agreed to come back at the next meeting, they could come back with a clean resolution. Then we would be voting on a resolution, not, not opining on letters that the resolution references.
So, quick question, Nick. Mitigation, the word mitigation in this context, does it mean 100%?
I have no idea.
Or does it mean, you know, I would, I would move that, you know, or I would think that if your floor was wet and you mopped it, that would be mitigating, but it might not be solving. So I don't know, does the word mitigate commit to a complete restoration?
And that, that's what I don't know and that's what I don't want to be arguing about when we're in final plan approval, that we didn't mitigate enough.
Right.
And so that's why, as, as I think the consensus is, that you need specificity when you're dealing with this type of resolution.
So are there any other, any other items?
Not on Amy's letter, I was going to go to R2 and they're just, again-
But before, before we get to that, Amy, you know, the applicant has just stated that we need to be very specific about what mitigation means here. So if we're asking the applicant to install a traffic adaptive system to mitigate a more than 10-second additional delay, then we need some type of a threshold of what that mitigation looks like. Are we reducing that 10-second delay or the 15-second delay to only five seconds? And I really think we need a performance standard here because I'm concerned that we are literally just throwing money at a problem, but we may not get any solution at all. We may just get a new traffic adaptive system that, you know, functions nice, but really hasn't fixed anything. So I would argue that we want to actually say that if, if, you know, the, if the post construction, the, sorry, the, if the delay increase is not offset by the, by the adaptive system, then we need to have some benchmarks. I'm not saying this right, but if, if there's a 15-second delay, then we need to see that cut by 50% or by 20% or 30%, whatever that is. I don't think we want to go by seconds, but we want to see some, some percentage improvement.
And you have to remember, this traffic pre-existed Villanova, very little of the odds of Villanova.
Nick, I'm not, I'm not saying 100%.
And we understand, we want to make it better. We're trying to make it better.
No, and, and I'm not saying that, I don't expect you to make it 100% better. I expect you to make it somewhat better. And I'm going to rely on staff to give us recommendations of what that likely number is.
So, and even, I'm sorry, even if, I'm not, so toward that, I'm not, I'm not arguing with it, I'm trying to augment that, okay? But I'm not sure that the performance standard is typically the way this is done. It's my understanding that these are often done by design standards. So that's what I would want.
That's true. And unfortunately, with the traffic adaptive system, we're not able to show you what the degradation or mitigation would be with it. We're, I can give you, there'll be a, you can expect a 30% reduction in your wait times and delays, which, it's, it's hard to quantify that when we look at 10-second mitigation because, and we can't equate that to the traffic adaptive system. But I do know that during the peak hours, you're not going to have a significant of an improvement, but during your off-peak hours, you will have much greater significant mitigation.
So similar to in Stormwater, we don't use a design standard for Stormwater because if we did, we would, we would spend 15 years trying to figure out why we got 10 gallons instead of nine. I think something similar would happen here if we, that is my opinion as to why we, this sort of thing lends itself to a design standard as opposed to a performance standard because it would be all but impossible to try to identify why an intersection went from, you know, seven to six or something like that. So, I don't know if you want to comment on it, but that's my assessment of situations like this.
You can move on, Nick.
Thank you. Going down to Exhibit C, which is the R2 letter, this is on, the first comment is on page three and it's comment four, and again, it's regarding this dark sky issue. And again, we're just asking that it be removed. We have to comply with dark sky in the CICD. Outside of the CICD, we have to comply with other township ordinances regarding lighting. The next comment, that was comment four on page three. The next comment is comment nine on page four and it suggested a rezoning. And of course, a rezoning is totally, you know, at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners and so we can agree to that as a condition of this approval. We'd be happy for it to be rezoned, but we can't agree to it as a condition of the approval. The next comment is under phasing pedestrian parking, also on page four, and it's comment two. And really, we have to provide landscaping along Barley Cone, we've agreed to that and I'll get to the condition actually in, in this resolution that provides for that too. So we are going to do it, we are going to provide the landscaping on Barley Cone. The concern that we have, it says, needs to be the property owner's satisfaction.
I'm sorry, Nick, I'm sorry to do this to you. Could you tell me where again?
Yeah, it's on page four, under phasing and pedestrian parking and traffic, number two.
Number two, okay. We're so close to the end.
Yeah, and it talks about landscaping along Barley Cone, which we will agree to do and in the resolution, there's a provision for it as well. And our concern here, so it's already provided in the resolution, our concern here, it needs to be to the property owner's satisfaction. Again, that's not a standard, we just don't know what that standard would be. Certainly, we would hope that would be the property owner's satisfaction, certainly would be in compliance with the ordinance, but we just can't agree to a broad standard saying that to the property owner's satisfaction because they could ask for a buffer of 100 feet, you know, so that's why we really cannot agree to that.
Well, the way I fix that problem in contract negotiations, I put the word reasonable in before satisfaction and that usually solves the problem.
Yeah, but I don't want to, and-
Hold on, but we need, what?
It's in the resolution already. As we go further down, it says, actually, the resolution's in, it says Blackfriar, it's supposed to say Barley Cone, you know, I've confirmed that, so, you know, but it's already in there.
It's already in there as, as the way this is worded or?
It's in there as, "The applicant shall provide a supplemental landscape plan for the buffer area along," and it says, "North Blackfriar," that's Barley Cone, neighboring residence property lines, we shall be reviewed and approved by the township. And we will, we will agree to that.
Okay, so I-
Mr. Scherzer, that is correct. The language in the resolution was, instead of North Blackfriar, it should say Barley Cone, so that was my mistake when I provided that to Solicitor Rice.
Can you tell us the number, is that number 13?
That is number 13, correct.
Okay, so, again, you want the reference to the R2 letter, phasing and pedestrian parking, traffic plan, paragraph two, to be struck.
Correct.
That's fine, as long as the staff, staff has a say in whether or not that buffering
We go down to the conditional, it starts on page four, the conditional use conditions. And the conditional use conditions have already been agreed to and actually are part of the conditional use provision. I think this tends to elaborate and adds more language to it. Villanova has to agree with what the conditional use provisions are and so I think it's superfluous to add more language to what they should be or how they should be enforced because, as I said, Villanova has agreed to it during the conditional use process and is part of the conditions for the conditional use process, Villanova has to do it.
Now, are you saying that, starting on page four?
And it goes through page seven, one to 17.
Seventeen conditions you say are all superfluous?
Well, they're already in the conditional use, they're already in the conditional use provisions. And he's just adding them again and actually making more comments to them. As I said, we have to agree to the, to the conditional use provisions. This is the fir-
Want to speak?
You know, so we're-
Let's, can we have Mr. Gabriel come up?
Sure. Thanks, Nick. Yeah, the, the, the presence of those conditions in our review letter was a request to provide updated status reports as to the satisfaction of those conditions so that this board knew as time passed along what conditions were satisfied that had been confirmed by township staff or whoever was responsible and what ones still needed to be addressed before all conditions would be finalized and final plans approved based on those conditions. So we haven't added anything really, right? What you have in front of you in that letter is a status report.
Status report.
Which will evolve as, as the plans go for the process.
But we reference your letter in the conditional conditions. So, Nick, is that the issue?
And also, this is the approval, so, so Steve, you write in here, paragraph six, "The plan needs to show elevation view of proposed fencing along Lancaster Avenue so that the township can determine if it's appropriate. The township also needs to determine if the proper proposed safety fencing along Route 100 rail line and along Eithen Avenue are acceptable." So, that's, how can you ask us to approve a status report? We're asking, we're being asked to approve the plans. So Steve, is this complied, does, do the plans meet this or do they not? I can't approve a status report.
What, what the resolution does is make the status report and the items still missing, still to be addressed, that are listed in that status report, a condition of preliminary plan approval by being included in the resolution.
But, but, but that's, that's kind of like being a little bit pregnant. Either, either the plan is approved and it's, as it's, it's going to be approved. If it's approved, it's approved, it's ready to go. If it's not in compliance, it shouldn't be approved. Not, not like, "Oh, well, it doesn't approve, it's not in compliance right now, but we promise we'll get there and you'll never, it'll never come before the Board of Commissioners again."
Well, the board, the board is going through this resolution to establish what will be the conditions of approval as the- the conditions of approval as described in the resolution, some of which board members are agreeing with, some are not. So this is one more of those kinds of items, where our review letter has a, has a status of the conditional use order conditions, and whether or not they've been satisfied.
Go ahead, finish. It's kind, I think Mr. Booker is saying it's kind of getting in the way of things here. I mean, I, I'd love to have a status report on all these items, but that, shouldn't that be outside the situation we're in now, the context of a preliminary plan approval or disapproval?
Well, I think in, in order for a plan to be approved, that's gone through conditional use, it must satisfy all the conditional use order conditions, in addition to land development regulations.
In your opinion, at this point, the, the conditions, the preliminary approval conditions that we currently have, do they, has the applicant met, and has the applicant met all the requirements?
Not yet.
And you're saying not yet?
Not yet.
So then why, we shouldn't really be voting on this tonight? We should be discussing this with the applicant.
Well, it would be as, just as these other conditions that we've talked about with regard to zoning, subdivision, traffic, there are certain things that will be made a condition of your resolution. For preliminary plan approval or disapproval, they will be conditions. The status, the, the items within the conditional use order conditions that are still remaining to be addressed, and that is not an unusual circumstance, given the, the type of conditions that some of them are, would also be still to be addressed as we go through the final plan review and approval process. So very similar status and conditions.
If the board feels comfortable, I think we can easily say that the applicant, as a condition, the applicant will comply with all the conditional use conditions. I mean, we all, we're going to have to do it anyway. We, we don't have any problem with that.
That's, that's my sense of how this should be done. I'm troubled by two things. Generally, I don't, I don't think you write things twice, meaning you write them once in contracts, correct? Because then you have to guard against typos and changes and things. So you write them once, and then essentially, we went through a process, we came up with conditions, and now we have language added to those conditions that are, that have become part of the approval, and we're going to ultimately end up, you know, first of all, those things didn't satisfy the process, the conditional use process that we used, and then we would have to spend time identifying what the meaning of all of those things are. The, the, the conditions that we identified are the ones that should be in the, in the resolution, in my opinion, nothing more.
Well, we paid R2 to come up with this list, and this is four pages, one, two, three, four pages of conditions, and their comments on the conditions, and what needs to happen. And we just heard R2 say, "They haven't done it yet," and we heard Nick say, "Take it all out, we promise, well, whatever conditions are, we promise. But if we take it all out, we will never be able to check it again."
That's not true. I don't believe that's true. So like, look at number four.
When will we check it?
Well, look at number four. We haven't received $175,000, I'm assuming, okay? But when, when we approve this, or if we approve it, then we will get our $175,000, and if we don't, we won't issue building permits, and we won't issue use and occupancy permits. So I don't see, I don't, I, I see this as valuable, but I don't see it as an element of, of the resolution. And if we want, I don't even see the need to include the conditional use provisions, because they stand aside, meaning they, they have their own independent authority, correct?
They speak for themselves.
Yes. But, but in, you know, as a compromise measure, if you want, if someone, if they want to include them, I wouldn't object to that.
I, I would include the comments here, you know, there's a variety of items here, there's seven, four pages of items that R2 has listed. Someone should check that all of these are done to our satisfaction and not merely delete them. So as a condition, you could say, "All of the requirements of R2 shall be met prior to final approval," but not take them all out.
And we will continue to do that as this plan goes, goes from preliminary plan to final plan review. We will continue to check on the status of every one of those 17 conditions. We haven't added language to the conditions, but what is in the letter does state the status of those. For, from our purposes, the, the letter, all of those comments does not, from our perspective, need to be included in your resolution. I just wanted to be able to explain that that's what that is. It's a status report.
All right.
Let's move on.
Yeah, well, I don't understand why we'd write it if we don't want to include it.
I'm with Don. I think we agree, your, your approach is, we make note of the fact that there are conditional use requirements that have to be complied with.
The, the last comment that.
May I just interrupt for a second? That, that provision is already set forth in Paragraph Four of the resolution, that the conditional use requirements are part of the, are, must be complied with.
Yeah, yeah, the, the issue is, there's a million conditional use items. No one will ever check them again, I assure you. Unless R2 does it and says, "Don't approve this," this board will never know whether this stuff is right. You can't just say, "Well, why do we need approval process?" Just say, "Nick, promise you're going to agree with every part of the ordinance, and go and take your approval and start building." That's not. It doesn't make any sense. That's not proper, because we cannot build a building permit, we cannot pull a building permit until all these conditions are met. And that's why you do conditions, that's why you do a preliminary plan, that's why you do a final plan. So, so, but, yeah, but leave them in. Why would you take them out and say, "Oh, we promised to." It's already in there. We promised to abide by all conditions.
Can I just put something for here? I, I would recommend that we actually take Item Three out of the, sorry, Item Three out, that references the R2 letter. However, we want Stephen Gabriel to advise the board, I, I would recommend before preliminary approval, of why them, items need to be inserted into the, into the conditional use approval. So if there's anything missing at this moment, we need to know tonight. I don't want to find out after preliminary. We, we need to have the conditions in tonight.
Yeah.
So, and if, and if you're not in a position to help us to do that, and I, then we need to delay this.
So let's hold the delay discussion, is that okay?
That's fine.
Move on to the technical, and then have the discussion on the delay.
This is germane to what we just talked about. So, I mean, the point is, I'm willing to take it out, but only if all the conditions that he believes should be in there are in there.
All right, Nick, what else you got?
Okay, just one last comment. Steve wrote a letter on April the first, dealing with the Church Walk and Bridge, and in particular, it would be Page Two of that letter that talks about subdivision. And the first one talks about an ADA parking spot on Moriarty Hall. That is an already existing ADA parking spot, and that parking spot is actually to serve Moriarty, it's not to serve Church Walk or anything of that nature. The, the ADA parking for Church Walk is already provided on the plans. As I said, this space is actually for Moriarty Hall, which will remain and still be used, and the ADA spot there is for Moriarty. We do have access for the ADA spots for the Church Walk Bridge. And the second comment is, and we, and.
Excuse me, are you still, are you in a different letter now?
Yes, it's, yeah, there's a letter.
Okay.
Dated April 1st.
April 1st, 2015.
Jim, sorry for, before we move on. So what's the action on that item? What is it?
We would have actually asked that it be removed. I don't, it's an existing nonconforming, I think he's asked him to connect it to the ADA, and again, Alex can maybe address that.
I mean, the issue is, we're trying to put, there's a bunch of different uses that the West Lancaster Parking Lot serves. It serves multiple buildings, and then the visitor lot serves the bridge. So if there's a specific condition, I would, it would be something more along the lines of, "Provide bridge ADA parking in the visitor lot," instead of, they're saying, "Provide a sidewalk from Moriarty's parking spot to the bridge." Each use gets its own ADA spot, so that spot stays for Moriarty, and then put the condition that ADA parking for the bridge, bridge be provided in the visitor lot, would be the better.
Is that already provided? Is that already in the plan, provided?
It, we would agree to that condition, to provide it in the visitor lot.
So which paragraphs? Is it Paragraph under zoning, Paragraph Two, or is it under subdivision?
Subdivision Number One.
Okay. Nothing, zoning is good. Correct, correct. And then just Number Two, and you may recall, we've talked about this last time, and that's the sidewalk leading from Lancaster Avenue up to the church, and that was, we talked about this last time. There was a request that we install a sidewalk from Lancaster Avenue to the church along that driveway. That's going to be open just for church-sponsored events, and we would ask that that be removed. And again, we had, you know, I think pretty extensive discussion last time regarding that. I would just go on.
Is that, is that the very last paragraph in his April 1st letter?
Uh huh.
Number Two?
On the April 1st letter, Number Two.
So that, you're saying that's?
We requested that be removed. You want both of those struck? Yes, one and two. The, Paragraph One is very specific. It says, "Provide a sidewalk." I don't, I don't, I guess I don't understand what's not specific about that, Mr. Tweedy. I didn't, I didn't say that. We've already explained that that ADA spot is for Moriarty Hall, and the request is, "Provide a sidewalk from that ADA spot to the Church Walk overpass." And we've already provided, or will provide ADA parking for those who are accessing Church Walk. That ADA spot there is only for Moriarty. It's an existing spot that exists today, that is for the Moriarty, the people who use Moriarty Hall. Now, it's not what our paid consultant told us. This is what he asked us to do, and you're, and it is specific. Just want to understand. Okay.
What else you got?
Anything else?
Yeah, just moving on very quickly on, and I'm, I'm going to come back to the fees, because I know that's an issue. Let me just come back, I'll try to make a quick presentation on the fees. The, on the, on 13, remember, that should read Barley Cone and not Black Fryer.
We got it.
Do we really care? And then on the one SALDO, again, we show the 20-foot entry drives on the plan, and I would just, you know, they're not existing entry drives, and maybe it's just, again, a matter of semantics and terminology. I would just request that first waiver request, State SALDO 255-29A2, to permit 22-foot entry/exit drives as shown on the plan, because it's already shown on the plan. I'm not really certain if, maybe the existing meant, they're already shown on the plan. I'm not positive, and it was just a matter, little matter of clarification, that we just strike the existing and add to the end that 20-foot entry/exit drives as shown on the plan, which they already show on the plan. Can I?
Take out "To remain in the West Lancaster Parking Lot," or leave that in?
Just take out existing.
Yeah, just take it out, yes. And that says "to remain," because actually, they're not only in the West Lancaster Parking Lot, they're also in the main lot, as well as the visitor lot. So right now, they're in the visitor lot, the West Lancaster Lot and the Lancaster Avenue Housing Parking Lot. So I believe the easiest fix is just to say, "As shown on the plan."
So, so that language would be SALDO 255-29A2, "To permit 22-foot entry drive as shown on plan," is the way that you propose it?
It says entry slash exit, I believe, drives as shown on the plan.
Now, the legal position there is that that's a nonconforming situation?
Now, the legal position there, again, you may recall that we discussed it, and we're going back and forth as to what the SALDO interpretation is on that. And Villanova will be providing 25-foot entry and exit drives as you enter the lot. The question is, between the parking spot, between the parking lots themselves, should they be 25 feet or 22 feet? And again, I don't know, if I recall correctly, I don't think Roger had an opinion as to whether they should be 25 or 22. It was more, well, he interpreted the ordinance to be 25 feet, Alex interpreted it to be, you know, not relevant to, you know, the drives between the, the drive, the actual parking areas.
So we agreed to the 22 feet, because there's less macadam, and it's more planning for stormwater.
If I may, the only other comment I have is on the parking rec fee, and I'll try to go through this as quickly as possible. Jim, could we have, can I have the computer on?
Nick, don't we also have to identify a, a numeric value for the second request for waiver? Because there, my recollection of the last meeting is that there was three different values established. There was a compromise value that was in between, that seemed to be the sense of the board, but it had a number associated with it.
Twenty-five.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the plan, yeah, I believe the waiver written in the resolution just says a reduced curb radius, or waiver request letter requested the use of a 25-foot radius.
And what, what were the choices? I remember there were three different.
The code requires a 35. We wanted a 25. And then I think the third option involved, if there were a right turn lane.
No, you started at 17.
Seventeen.
You started at 17.
Well, existing is 17.
Well, I'm telling the three things, where existing is 17, there's 25, 35, 25, and we all agree to 25.
Well, we didn't agree to anything.
Well, we recommended.
Well, we didn't, you recommended.
That's right.
It's a royal way there.
Glad he finally admitted to something. Hey, you know what? This is fun. So we did receive correspondence from PennDOT, and PennDOT is recommending that if there is in fact no right turn lane, that the department recommends, will recommend, and will allow a 35-foot corner radius. So while we have an opinion of 25 feet, which is completely unqualified, PennDOT is basically saying 35 feet, okay? They're saying, again, their words, we will recommend, excuse me, we will recommend and allow a 35-foot corner radius. So we, we either agree that there's going to be a right turn lane there, and then there could be a 25-foot radius, or we agree there's 35-foot radius. But who are we to tell PennDOT that we know better?
If we, if we agreed to the 35, if we chose the 35-foot like PennDOT, we would then expand the, the, the street would have to get wider, correct? Or the pedestrian crossing.
But PennDOT is already applying that this is okay.
Can John, I ask a question, just mind if I?
With a 35-foot radius, the crosswalk length increases in the ped scramble timing would go up, I believe. I think it was, that category was the 10% increase.
So a com, a common way to control.
Tempor, wait, can, can you quantify that better? 10% increase, how many seconds is that?
I'd have to ask Frank what the, he had that original presentation.
Just, I just need the seconds. And that assumes that we maintain the existing geometry of the crosswalk, and don't add any pitch to it to shorten that distance.
So the, the question is, going from 25 feet to 35 feet radius?
It would be approximately three seconds of additional ped clearance time.
Okay, so we're talking about three seconds.
Probably 12%, 10%?
Matter, what matters is.
Fine, fine.
When I'm sitting in my car, I'm not saying, "Oh, wow, that was 10% longer." I'm saying, "Wow, that was three seconds longer."
At our last.
No offense, Don, but we don't, we don't drive around saying, "Wow, this trip took me 12% longer today. This trip took me an hour longer today. It took me three seconds longer." No one's going to complain about three seconds, okay?
There's one thing that can.
The road's need to be wider there anyways, it's, it's a moot point.
There, there's one other item from Mr. Hanny's email that the, the board should be aware of. I'm sorry, I just lost my place. Bear with me for one minute.
And didn't we, at the last meeting, didn't we see essentially curb cuts of the different radius? That's my recollection, that we looked at 35, 25, and 17, and saw the, the tightness of the, or the relative looseness of the.
Correct. There was a slideshow that showed, as radius gets larger, the crosswalk either has to become more perpendicular, which pulls away the northern end of the crosswalk further and further from the corner, to maintain the same length, or the crosswalk gets longer, or some combination of the two. But I did just find the, the thing I wanted to clarify. Mr. Hanny says, "The department will not require, nor will oppose, a right turn lane at Ithaca Avenue." So just so it's clear, PennDOT hasn't come up with a position that the right turn lane is a requirement. In fact, it's, it's, it's leaning toward neutrality, as that statement clearly states. But did give the opinion, as Commissioner Fisher pointed out, that if the township and Villanova agree to provide a right turn lane, then the radius should be 25 feet, and if the township and Villanova agree not to provide a right turn lane, then the radius should be 35 feet, but not both.
And what's the opposition to 35 feet? I remember discussing, tell me, just tell me again why, I don't remember the answer, why, why is 35 feet problematic from Villanova's perspective?
Because, given the skewed nature of the intersection, the crosswalks actually terminate along the radii, as opposed to a straight section of the roadway. So whether you add a lane or increase the radius, the effect is to make the crosswalk longer. Obviously, if you do both, you double that effect. But the, the southern end of the eastbound crosswalk currently terminates into that radius that's being increased. So currently, it's. currently terminates into that radius that's being increased. So currently, it's 17 feet. The applicant's plans propose increasing it by 50% of 25 feet. That alone is going to make the crosswalk somewhat longer if the exact alignment of the crosswalk is maintained. What Mr. Hanny did confirm is that we can rotate the crosswalk slightly counterclockwise, keeping the southern end fixed and sweeping the top a little bit to the west. And in doing so, approximately maintain its length. But if the radius gets larger than 25 feet, whether it's 30 or 35 or whatever the number is, it will, of course, get longer. If you add a right turn lane, it'll get even longer still.
Mr. President?
Can I just clarify, though? In the letter from Francis Hanny, it does not say if the township and the applicant agree on a 35-foot radius. It says if we agree on the turn lane. But as far as the radius of the, of the corner, he states, quote, "If no right turn lane is to be required, then the department will recommend and allow a 35-foot corner radius."
That's very clear.
So it isn't, it isn't dependent on the township and the, and the applicant agreeing. This is PennDOT saying, we're recommending a 35-foot turning radius.
John, what, what is the value of a 35-foot turning radius? I, I need to be educated.
I, I think, I, I think it just improves visibility for the pedestrians. It improves storage area for the pedestrians. It improves?
Storage area?
Well, you have a lot of pedestrians waiting to cross the street.
Oh, waiting, okay.
So they're stepping off the curb right now because there's not enough room on the curb on the sidewalk at that location. This would be a good question for PennDOT. But the fact is, PennDOT opinion is, we recommend it. So, you know.
And is that, is that accurate? I think it would decrease visibility and decrease storage.
Yeah, I was actually going to say, a bigger radius takes away from sidewalk storage.
And part of, part of my opposition to this, and at least I've been consistent, is PennDOT is a, it's a vehicle institute. And it's all about moving vehicles down Route 30. And our Route 30 has suffered from that. And if, if we allow wider, bigger radius, that means more visibility for cars. It means higher speeds. It means more vulnerability for pedestrians. Part of the appeal of this for me has always been the, sort of the village-like nature that they're trying to produce with the plan. And tighter radiuses do that. Also, tighter radiuses are a typical method of, of traffic calming. So we are presented often with intersections that are too fast and traffic, and tightening the radius is one of the ways that you can calm the traffic.
Mr. President, if I may, just on this, you know, we've looked at this from the police department. And again, I will recommend that we do install the right turn lane. The police department, their staff traffic, we've looked at it today. Again, we look at this. We've also met with, I know there's a number of residents that are here in a group, but also we've met at the homes of other residents that have expressed their concern for this. I think ongoing with your, what you just spoke about now, with that right turn lane, we'll continue to allow traffic to move clearly. I think this is something that should be, the board should stand on and make them put this in. I think PennDOT's letter is they took a neutral stance. I think I understand why they took the neutral stance on this. But I think this is something that should be required of them to put this in. I think the neighborhood is something, and I will stand behind our police officers. They're there. They see what goes on. They're there with events. I stand squarely behind them. They've got fact that stands behind it. And when we talk about 112, I believe, reported crashes in and around that area, that speaks volumes for me that this is something we should ask them to do. Well.
Well, we discussed, we discussed this at length. And the decision was made, the fact that putting extra lane, that's more time, that's more traffic congestion, and we're putting in the right-hand turn. And it's only, it's only good at special times. It's going to increase the speed of traffic. And it's not going to help with traffic calming at all, Bob. When you, when you, like Don said, when you open this highway up.
And PennDOT even said it had no impact.
Well, I think, well, I think from what, what I spoke about, there's a reason why PennDOT took a neutral stance on this.
So if, if that's the argument, guys, then let's not do it at any new development and township.
They're talking about Villanova, that's all we're talking about.
Let's not do it at Biomed then. No extra turning lanes.
John, I am, I am, I am consistent. For six years, I've been consistent about the value of, of lane reduction. It's a common practice in planning. And, you know, it's not new for me to say that. So, and I've been consistent in the whole two years that this has been going through the, through the plan. So, you know, I'm, I'm often an advocate for making the roads tighter and reducing the speed.
Don, you live, and I respect what you're saying. But to the residents who live in my area that would like to go west, we would like to be able to do that. Okay?
But even, even John, some of the things that, some of, some of the emails that I received just in the last four or five days have been about the danger of the intersection. So it's cutting both ways. If you accelerate the flow, if you increase the speeds in the traffic at those intersections?
We're going to get to the bridge issue in a couple minutes.
Please, let me finish. If, if you do that, you, you decrease the safety of the intersection. Part of the way of controlling the safety of the intersection is by not widening it to facilitate more traffic and more cars and more speed.
Actually, the way, the way to make that intersection safe was already solved in 1990 by commissioners that sit on this board, when Villanova and the Board of Commissioners agreed that Villanova would build a pedestrian bridge across Eithan Avenue and?
Your office subject.
Hold on.
Can I?
Or tunnel. Right. So the, the point is, we will talk about this at length tonight. And the fact that Villanova hasn't fulfilled their obligation under those conditional approvals.
Could I quote John Fisher? I, Mr. Hanny, the Traffic Service Manager, Services Manager for PennDOT's District 6.0, here's what he said in his email to Stephen Norcini on April 23rd. The, paragraph two, "The analysis we have considered is based on this intersection, is based on a conservative approach and includes the modeling of both peak hour as well as large special events. The warrants for a right turn lane are only marginally met during peak hours. The addition of a right turn lane offers little or no capacity benefit to the intersection due to the required increase in pedestrian crossing time." So if you accept that as a valid opinion of an expert, I assume he is, then we're left with your point about stacking up of pedestrians and visibility. And I, I just don't see where the value is in the visibility issue.
I think, Commissioner, if I may add to that, driving by there to my home and watching the students standing on the curb almost in the street, you have to see it. And I know from the university's perspective, I mean, you see students, you can't correct them. They cross the street all over. But again, too, you see that. And also, too, you have a lot of residents that live in the back neighborhoods that have, again, expressed this concern over this. But I think also, one of the statements were made, you have to apply what we're applying here to Villanova, has to apply the same standard to Biomed. Because Biomed, we look to apply something different to them as what we're applying here to Villanova. So when we talked about traffic calming and traffic, we've got to apply them both to the same thing.
But they don't have the volume of pedestrians crossing to Radnor High School. People are not crossing that road, Bob.
I think we've got to talk about when we widen roads, we narrowing roads.
All right, fine, fine.
One of the things I want to do with, is of, is not create, not turn this intersection into the intersection that's in front of Biomed. That's part of why I'm taking the position I'm taking, is because that intersection is, you, you can't have pedestrian crossing there. It's too big. And if we gravitate in that direction, we could do the same, we could make the, the intersection at Eithan more problematic than it already is.
But also, let's go back to the 35-foot radius, which is where we started. What you're doing with the 35-foot radius is making it easier for a large vehicle to turn the corner without intruding on the opposite direction. So the, it really comes down to whether the trucks that will be using that corner, such as deliveries for the retail, are they going to be able to make that turn without intruding on the other lane? And secondly, I mean, we all have to remember, you have the PMW right down the street. So tractor trailers aren't going to be turning in this corner because they're going, not going to have anywhere to go.
Right now, as it's presently designed, they have the stop bar 50 feet back from the intersection, which is beyond the normally accepted 30-foot maximum. So it would be my recommendation that you minimally improve that corner to a 35.
Well, right now, isn't it 17, Amy? And it's actually greater than 90 degrees?
It is 17. But you're not having those trucks coming into the parking lot that's right there. When you move this to a retail center, and you turn this into the dormitories and the student union, you're going to have trucks making that right turn, I, I believe, more in the future. And you need to make sure that those turns are made without encroaching on opposing lanes. And right now.
Did you ever get, you had requested, or Steve had requested, turning templates of box trucks?
Correct.
Did we get those?
I believe they showed it for, not the correct-sized truck that we were looking for. We were looking for a WB50. And I believe there was a different truck that was provided. And the stop bar with that truck was 50 feet back.
And John, as you said, with the bridge there, you're not going to be, have a massive amount of trucks turning there. It's not going to be, you know, frequent of, you know, 50, 20 trucks.
With that stop bar and that placement, that is very problematic.
I'd like to make a good engineering decision here instead of a political one. What I'm hearing from all the, I'm hearing from PennDOT, I'm hearing from staff, I'm hearing from the, everyone except for the Board of Commissioners and the public as well, I'm hearing that this corner needs a higher radius, a larger radius to make it safer. We do have trucks turning there now. We will have many trucks turning there, especially if Villanova puts the, the retail piece of it in. If, especially if we're talking about bookstore or bistro, whatever it is that's going to go in there. And then we're also with, remember, fire trucks have to get down there, right? So Radnor Firehouse is responding to this fire in the new dorms. There are new dorms now, right? There's no need for a fire truck to go to the parking lot unless a car goes on fire. But a fire truck has to make that turn. And with a 50-foot stop bar, do you really think anyone's going to stop 50 feet back from an intersection? They're already up at the intersection by the time they realize it's red.
John, I've seen fire trucks coming. Everybody gets out of the way.
You know, you know, but where are they going to go on a one-lane road?
Well, folks, folks, the issue is PennDOT recommended 35 feet if we don't put in the, the turn lane. 25 feet with the turn lane, we, we had a meeting, we talked with the folks at PennDOT, and their view is, is reasonable. And I think we should follow it. In addition, I would agree, PennDOT does not say that it doesn't help to have a right turn lane. They say, they don't feel strongly about it, but they do recognize that it could or will make some difference and have some benefit. So I like the, the right-hand turn lane as well.
Mr. President, Mr. President, would you mind if I interject with your permission and the Commissioner's permission? Since the inception, when Villanova first came up with their plan, I directed Officer Ray Mattis at a traffic safety unit to stay on top of all of the traffic concerns regarding the Villanova project. He's more knowledgeable than anybody else in my staff regarding Villanova. And with your permission and Mr. Zinkowski's permission, I'd like to have Officer Mattis just tell you his opinion regarding this right turn lane, if you, if you would allow him to do so.
Yes, please do.
Commissioners, regarding the right turn lane, currently, through my experience, in the morning peak and the afternoon peak, there is stacking in the right lane. And that, we feel, is due mainly to the vehicles turning right on the South Eithan Avenue. By having this right turn lane in there, that which, that should improve the traffic flow for eastbound traffic on Lancaster. Secondly, when there's events, okay, our goal is to, when the New Pike Garage fills and South Campus fills, we would like to stop traffic going into the neighborhoods down South Eithan Avenue. By having this right turn lane in, we can barricade that right turn lane off. So before the residents, or the visitors get to that intersection, they are going to know that they cannot make a right turn on the South Eithan Avenue. Currently, we cannot shut it down because they stop in the intersection and see, oh, the roadway's blocked off, I can't go down there. Then they try to have a conversation with the officer directing traffic in the intersection. So that is going to help us during event time. Because they're going to be, I think, it was brought up about 150-foot lane. They're going to know well ahead of time, and they're not going to be able to permit to go down that, to make a right turn on the South Eithan, which will help the residents back in that neighborhood down there.
And also, you realize there's going to be two other right turn lanes put in before this right turn lane. We'll have two additional right turn lanes being put in that aren't there now.
That is correct. But they're creatures of habit right now. They're going to go down, the quickest way they can get to that, that parking garage and towards that facility, the stadium, they're going to, it's going to be very difficult to pull them away from that major intersection there.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And then regarding the, the radius, currently, right now, when there's buses turning, they're on the sidewalk there. When we're standing in direct traffic, we have to get the pedestrians to back up because they're up on top of that curb right now when they're turning, the bus turning there.
I think we should recognize that although PennDOT was noncommittal, they did go through to the point of providing the general PennDOT turn lane length and taper. So although they didn't deny or approve one way or the other, they did actually go through and say, you know, here's your standout, standard PennDOT turn lane taper warning and address the radius in there. So I think it's, bears conversation.
Okay, so all very informative. Thank you for that. My, my sense is that that one's going to be multiple choice, that we've, we've kind of debated that one enough. We're going to have to vote on that one. So my sense is it's time to move to the discussion about whether the vote should be tonight. Nick, I'm sorry. I assumed you were done.
I'm sorry, there's just one other thing as to park and rec fee. If I could just go there. I'll try to go through it very quickly. You'll see up on, on your screen. And what I have is the ordinance itself. And the important, as part of the SALDO, the important part of the ordinance here is that it refers to building area. And then description of building area in the park and rec fee requirements is herein defined as the area occupied by buildings to the extremities of all roof lines. And then it talks about the fee in lieu of dedication, which we're aware of. But the important thing here is what's the definition of building area? So if we drop down.
Nick, that second bullet point, 25543 dot one?
Right.
Number two?
That tells how much it's supposed to be.
Can you put that back for a moment? So it says, "The fee for non-residential subdivisions or land developments shall be $3,307 per?
Four thousand.
Four thousand square feet of building area?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the issue, is what is building area? You go to the definition of building area, as we said, the, that provision says area occupied by buildings to the extremities of all roof lines. Actually, it's not defined in the SALDO because it's a zoning issue, what building area is. And it's defined in the, in the, in the zoning code as building area. And the important part here is very similar to what the building area is, the definition in the park and rec fee, is measured at the greatest outside dimensions. And that is how zoning always refers to building area. Whether you're dealing with the old plan institutional, it says the building area, not more than 30% of the total lot area occupied by buildings. In the CICD, it talks about total building coverage. And that's the point. When you're talking about building area, you're talking about the footprint of the building. And that's what this ordinance says. If you want to look at floor area, the zoning code also defines floor area. And it says, "As some of the horizontal floor areas of a building." So you're talking about all the floors. And in, in our zoning code, when it's talking about floor areas, talking about number of parking spaces that is required, whether it's an office use or a retail use. And the point is, if the park and rec fee was to be based on the horizontal floor area or the floor area, it'd been very easy to say, based on floor area. That's not what the park and rec fee ordinance says. It says, based on building area. Also, previously, just recently, I believe it was last month, March 3, 2015, Villanova, as you know, came forth with the WESA, which is the addition to the Butler Annex. And in that resolution, they based the park and rec fee on the total building area. That is the footprint. It was $13,287, which was based on the footprint of 16,072 square feet. It was not based on gross floor area, it was based on the footprint. Finally, you've heard a lot of discussion during the my Biomed discussions. I don't think this ordinance is ambiguous. I think it's very clear. It's based on building area, which is footprint. But if it is ambiguous, it's very clear also that when you're looking at interpretation of the ordinance, it must be interpreted uniformly. And that's why I bring up the WESA ordinance. It's also required that it must be specific. Can contain a rule, not contain the code. Must be clear from the plain language. Cannot substitute its own version of the code. And as we know, we've talked again many times about this, that interpretations of ordinances, the MPC requires that when there's any doubt, again, I don't think there's doubt here, but when there's any doubt, it must be in favor of the land of the property owner and against any implied extension of the restriction. So I just wanted to go through that with the board here. I think the ordinance is very clear. It refers to building area. It's very clear what building area means. And in the ordinance here, it does not say floor area. It says building area.
And the building area is how many square feet?
The building area is 130,245 square feet. Remember also?
And that equals how many dollars?
109,131 dollars. $109,131. Remember also, and this isn't really relevant to what we're talking about here, but Villanova did, or has actually donated land, or has agreed not to use the whole Aldwin Triangle. The Aldwin Triangle would be preserved. And I just bring that up. Again, it's not necessarily relevant to the definition here, what we're talking about is definition, but, you know, I would like to point out that as well.
Do we have a technical interpretation of this from our-
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to comment, and I agree with Nick that the definitions of the zoning ordinance are as he put them. Unfortunately, this isn't a zoning ordinance provision, so trying to flip-flop back and forth between what definition is in one ordinance and apply it to another, quite frankly, is inappropriate. Second, regarding the MPC provisions, those fall under zoning, not subdivision land development. So, again, calling out provisions from a zoning requirement and applying it to subdivision land development, particularly in interpreting the MPC, again, is not appropriate. We feel that the building area is, the entire building area is the entire square footage. And that's what my recommendation would be, based off of the gross square footage.
Just one thing I do disagree with, the MPC does talk about SALDO subdivision requirements as well as zoning requirements.
So Nick, the Butler Annex, is that a single floor or two floors?
No, it's multiple floors.
So maybe we undercharge that fee then, that may be a mistake.
What I heard Kevin say is that it wasn't in the CICD, which is why it was charged at the rate that it was charged, is that accurate?
No, I think that that fee was based off of a number that was provided to us. If an incorrect number was provided to us, then the calculation would have been incorrect.
That's not true, that's not true.
I'm sure if you'd like to propose a pilot, the board would be more than happy to entertain that.
So anyway, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay. And that's all that I would have at this time, unless there's any questions from the board. That was a condition, the condition as reads in the ordinance is based on gross square footage.
You want, you're requesting that number to be reduced from 423 to 109 plus or minus?
That's correct.
109, 131.
So that's something the board will have to consider.
Yes.
I didn't get into the fine points of the ordinances. I looked at it from a policy standpoint, and I looked at the ordinance that we all, all seven of us, maybe Mr. Booker wasn't with us, when we enacted the payment in lieu of requirement for our park and recreation fund. If we had intended this fee to be applied vertically, perhaps we would have used different terminology, we would have said, instead of, instead of building area, we would have said volume, building volume. And the rationale behind our ordinance, I believe, was, and Elaine, you can't speak tonight, but you certainly were involved in this, is that a developer is taking up ground in the township that we maybe need for stormwater, for infiltration, for other things, for parks, and that measuring rod or measuring stick for that taking is the area, the two-dimensional area that the developer is taking, not three-dimensional, not volume. Because the airspace, actually, there's no offense to the airfare, there's no offense to our environment or to stormwater issues by going vertically. So that was my thinking on the, why we had an opportunity to use the word volume and we didn't, maybe I wasn't smart enough to think of it.
Jim, can I just insert something to that?
Yeah, you go ahead, I'm finished.
The purpose of the fee was to address the impact of development. So in this case, we're adding 1,000 residents, we can argue that all night, but 1,000 new residents coming into the town, and within a mile of this development, Clemecrone Park is in the neighborhood, and we have residents, students living in the neighborhood, we have students living on campus, they're going to use that park, we want to have park impact fees to help offset the impact of these developments. So the point is, we would like Villanova to pay this fee, so that in the end, that we can improve these parks and maintain them. So, you know, that's what the fee is about, and our interpretation has been square footage. So I think we did make a mistake on the Butler Annex, I think that should have been higher. But in this case, I think this fee, in my opinion, will stand.
I'm going to just make a comment, this has nothing to do-
I'm sorry, you're out of order, you cannot speak at all.
Not at all.
Not at all. Sorry.
Just to support what John was just saying, when we, when we looked at this originally and passed it, this was an impact fee.
It doesn't matter.
And the reason I know that is, historically, I had tried to have a similar fee passed years ago. And at that time, I don't know what changed since then, but there was a change, you weren't permitted to do that unless you could definitely show the impact. So it's based on the population. So if somebody builds 100 houses, you figure how many possible individuals are there. And we really do need parkland to provide those folks with a quality of life. And if the developer isn't willing to make that parkland as part of their project, then they provide funds to the township so that they can pursue further open space or improve existing parks. So it would have been the total square footage, not the building area.
Commissioners, if I can also add that the MPC is what drives the language for a municipality to set up the requirements for park and recreation land or the fees to be collected therefrom if the applicant decides to do the fee in lieu of. Those provisions are found under the subdivision land development section of the MPC. And one of the requirements to support the gross square footage calculation, under the provisions for this section, the amount and location of land to be dedicated or the fees to be paid shall bear a reasonable relationship to the use of the park and recreational facilities by future inhabitants of the development or subdivision. So unless they're going to tell us that their future inhabitants are only occupying the ground floor and not floors 2, 3, 4, and 5, then I would agree, would only be on the footprint. But since floors 2, 3, 4, and 5 are going to be occupied and are going to be inhabitants in there, that is why we based the code off of the provisions of the MPC. If we had intended it to be, Commissioner Higgins, to the footprint, we would have then clearly said the building footprint, not the building area. Area is the entire area of the building. Footprint would denote just the outline of the building.
Why did you say gross square footage then? It doesn't say that.
Point of order.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Kevin, why don't we put the gross square footage of the building? Why don't we put total square footage of building if that's what we meant?
Maybe the ordinance could have been worded better and clearer, but right now, it doesn't say footprint, it says building area, it doesn't say gross floor area. But we prepared this ordinance based off of the language of the MPC, and the intent always was for the gross square footage.
Okay, so-
And you have to remember too, Villanova has their own fields. They have a whole mass of fields. And I hear this talk about using all the floors because you have 1,100 residents. Villanova has their own fields. This isn't a subdivision. This impact fee in the MPC was really based on residential subdivisions. This is not a residential subdivision. Villanova already has their fields, it's very limited impact due to Villanova's development on Park and Rec and Radnor Township.
All right, can you stop the sidebar?
All right. So Don, do you want to discuss whether or not we're tabling this tonight?
Yeah, well, as I understand it, we are up against the statutory deadline, so we have to take action tonight, one way or another. John Rice?
Or the applicant can agree.
Yeah, very good, I'm going to get to that.
You would need a written extension from the applicant, and I, my understanding is, the current review period expires on April 30th, so you should really get that written extension tonight.
So I just think it's, I think it's, what would be appropriate would be for you to take and give us an extension to the next meeting. There's just entirely too much information here for us to digest. We had difficulty digesting it, and we've been following it all along. And we are presumably the experts on it, you know, we have spent more time at this than anyone else in Radnor. Something a little unique for me is that I am, I've long since passed the point where, you know, I'm making choices and my choices are alienating, and those people, you know, I've had communications with them, but this weekend, when people contacted me, I didn't have answers. Every other time somebody contacted me, I had an answer as to why something was the way it was. This weekend, I didn't have answers, and for myself, I'm comfortable with much of this. And I'm ready to make a decision, but my sense is that this was just too much for the community to digest in such a short period of time. So before we get into what the what's ifs and the what leverage, my, I'm going to put it out as a request, give us two more weeks, and then what I think would be prudent, would be, staff comes up with the resolution with the sense of the changes that we addressed tonight, and then I think Villanova's going to have to come up with its alternatives, and then I think we're going to have to vote one by one, meaning that I suspect there's still a sizable gap between what our staff is recommending to us, what Villanova wants, and even this board, you know, who I don't know that is going to be in agreement with our staff, and I'm not, I don't know that they're going to be in agreement with Villanova. So that's my sense of how we should approve. I don't know if anybody feels differently or the same.
Don, I agree completely, because all the changes have been made, it would be very hard to look someone in the face and say that you knew what you were voting on. You know, you really need the whole thing spelled out in the final version.
Maybe I can short-circuit discussion too. Can we get through, I know there's another point that you alluded to that seems to be a cause for concern, can we get to that this evening instead of discussing it the next meeting?
Very well. So the second category of things, yes, but the second category, if this is essentially a second caucus, which in my opinion is what it should be, then we also have to address the issue of the, what is or is not the obligation of the previous pedestrian bridges or the underpasses. So we haven't even started that at 9:30. So I don't know, is it appropriate for us to, before we proceed, to get a sense from Villanova as to its willingness to grant us the extension? And if that's the case, then we could move on to sort of a caucus-like discussion of the issue of the underpass?
Yes, I've been advised by Villanova they would agree to an extension until April 12, or May the 12th, excuse me, which is your next meeting's May 11th.
Okay.
And I will provide a written confirmation of that.
Just so I understand the MPC and the sequence, if we did not need an extension and we voted tonight, would this then go back to the planning commission?
For final plan approval, yeah, for final plan, yes, for final-
And that would be sometime in the month of May?
It's going to delay us now, we're not going to be able to make application probably for final plan until June.
Jim, they've agreed to go to, they may go 12, so we're going to do that, they're going to tighten all this up, okay? And we're going to discuss, then we're going to discuss the Eathen Avenue Bridge, so that on May 11th, we can vote on this, with Nick having a letter from our staff on everything they agree to and everything they don't agree to, and then we can vote on the things they don't agree to, what we think. Is that right, Nick?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're not voting on this this evening, we're going to put all this together, and we're going to vote on this at our next meeting, but we're going to have a discussion of the underpass.
And I, and I believe, and I'll just go right into it, because I think, I believe I know what the issues are. There's a resolution, I don't know if you have it in front of you, 90-04, you probably have it, and it's number three, obviously, that we're talking about here. And it talks about completely engineered plans for the pedestrian bridge, a condition, this was the West Campus approval for the dormitories in West Campus. Completely engineered plans for pedestrian bridge spanning both Lancaster Avenue as well as Eathen Avenue be completed by March 1992, and that best efforts be made to obtain approvals of the plans from PennDOT and any other governmental agencies and authorities, and that best efforts be used to complete construction of the bridge on or before occupancy of the dormitories provided in this application. Obviously, those dorms have been occupied now for over 20 years, so the township acquiesced in that Villanova has met that condition. And in fact, Villanova expended over a million dollars in designing pedestrian access at that intersection, as well as moved some of the utilities in advance of it. At some point, the township and PennDOT determined that the access at that location was not appropriate. I believe the main, one of the main reasons for that is the total deconstruction of Lancaster Avenue in that area, and how long it would take for that to be done, and closing down Lancaster Avenue in that area, and the impact on adjacent streets by doing that.
Nick, is that a tunnel or a bridge?
Tunnel.
Well, there, I noticed, this says pedestrian bridge. You've heard discussions all during this process about the non-feasibility of putting a pedestrian bridge in that area due to grade, due to access points, and everything of that nature. At some point, it appears, and I'm not certain when or how or whatever, I saw the article, I guess it was passed around, that talked about an underpass. But this resolution refers to the pedestrian bridge. As I said, Villanova met their conditions here. They used best efforts to do everything that was required here, and that was indicated by the township granting building permits for Villanova to occupy West Campus.
But in spending a million dollars, Villanova designed this beautiful underpass.
They designed an underpass.
Which I saw, I mean, everybody had a copy of it, you know, with the cutout, you know, I saw the underpass, you have that, right?
Right. And my understanding is that it was the contributions by PennDOT, even the township, as well as Villanova toward this, and at some point, it fell apart, it just was not deemed to be an appropriate use. And I think it was deemed also that it wouldn't really alleviate the situation. Subsequent to that, Villanova did do some things at that intersection. One's a pedestrian scramble, which is the all, you know, turn, walk-only phase, which was not, up at that point, was not part of the development. Second, Villanova also installed left turn lanes, both eastbound and westbound. And then they also, up to that point, there really wasn't fencing along that parking lot. The students did cross Lancaster Avenue at all points, and fencing was installed to funnel it to the intersection. So as that was funneled to the intersection, Villanova also installed the left turn lanes at that intersection, as well as a pedestrian scramble, to try to alleviate the concern that they had regarding safety and things of that nature here. But Villanova met this condition, that's what it really comes down to.
And the Board of Commissioners did sign off, one way or another, on not building this. I know we ran for a million dollars, and when it was decided that this was not going to be built, the Commissioners at that time were okay with it because they didn't want to spend the million dollars on this. So that-
Okay, can anyone, can anyone point me to, point me to the resolutions or ordinances that were voted upon by the Board of Commissioners saying that?
No, but it's very obvious that you wouldn't have got building permits if you had a bridge that you were supposed to build according to this development.
And John, there weren't any resolutions or ordinances that required it either.
What I'm saying is, you know, you can't have, sorry, this elected body doesn't perform any official action unless it's done in public, done by vote. And if so, then there would be public minutes of that vote. And I'm asking, are there any public minutes showing that the Board of Commissioners voted, democratically voted, to say, we're okay with you not building that bridge or tunnel?
Right, but there's no minutes or public meeting in which the Board of Commissioners said, you have to build a bridge. The resolution, no, the resolution didn't say you have to build a bridge, it simply said you have to design it and go through the efforts to have it built. And then the efforts seemed to be what stalled it. And then I, this is one of those missing pieces of, thank you for giving us the delay. This is one of those missing pieces of information that I don't have. I'm assuming the plan doesn't have a bridge on it, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And unlike this plan, this is, you know, one of the questions that I got this weekend that I did not have an answer to, was, how are you going to protect against this happening again? And the prime way that we're going to protect against this happening again is, this plan has a bridge on it, and if Villanova doesn't build the bridge, then Villanova won't get the permits, and they won't be allowed to occupy the buildings. So I think there is a distinction between what's transpiring now and what transpired in the 90s.
And we could never build a bridge there because it wasn't ADA compliant.
Okay, ADA compliant, I keep hearing-
We developed, we developed, they spent a million dollars developing this underpass. And it was beautiful. You know, when you walk through there. But I can tell you, as a Commissioner at that time, we did not object to them not building this. We acquiesced to them not doing this.
It, okay, outside of you voting in public, you don't have the authority to acquiesce, okay?
And just doing your best, it wasn't in stone that they had to do this, it's to make your best efforts.
Okay. So, you know, I'm not the attorney in the room, but I certainly- Okay, so, you know, I'm not the attorney in the room, but I certainly work with contracts on a daily basis. And, you know, the word best efforts means a lot in contracts, okay? If you, if you promise to perform some function and, and, and to perform that as best effort, and you don't perform that function, then you're, you're basically not fulfilling your obligation under the contract. There is a lot of case law around best efforts, and I would like our solicitor, the other John Rice, to, to give us case law explanation of how far this term can be taken. But in my opinion, even though Villanova had, it appears that they may have, I don't know if they engineered drawings, I don't see the drawings, okay?
Well, they're, they're somewhere.
Now, hang on. So that, in the, in the approval, it stated that Villanova would, would use best efforts to engineer and then engineer, design, and construct. And, you know, not one, not two, all of that. They had to do all of that. And, and, and under the definition of best efforts, the law's pretty clear, in my opinion, that it says that basically unless there's some insurmountable obstacle, and that, that's dependent on the person or the, or the institution that's beyond their capacity, then, you know, pretty much they haven't fulfilled their effort, their best effort. So what I haven't heard is, I haven't heard that there were engineered plans. And that, that conditional approval said that they must have best efforts at producing engineered plans.
There were engineered plans.
And that's one of the things that I hadn't heard either, so they're going to have to...
So that's, I, I need to see those, we need to see those.
You know...
Two, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm just going to, so that would prove that they applied best efforts at the engineering design. But the second half is to construct. And what I haven't seen is any proof that shows that they, they couldn't, or that they were hindered by an insurmountable issue that they could not overcome in their capacity. So if it's a $4 million tunnel, you know, we're talking about an institution that's raising between 400 and 500 million dollars a year at this time, and netting between 30 and 50 million dollars a year. They're about to build a $350 million project. So the question is, what is beyond their capacity? Okay, maybe in 1990, it was beyond their capacity, but we're looking, they're still obligated, in my opinion. There's no sunset on this. Whether the board waived, again, I don't think the Board of Commissioners, Jim Higgins, Commissioner Higgins was a Commissioner at the time of the vote in, on the 90-4. I don't think that board voted to rescind that condition. I don't think that board voted at any time to waive that condition. Whether or not the township engineer held Villanova to that standard or not, that's not, that's not, that doesn't absolve Villanova of the responsibility. Did the township do a lousy job in policing themselves? Yes, probably. But in the end, Villanova still has an obligation that's out there, and in my opinion, they did not exert best efforts to construct. They may have designed, they didn't come up with the funding they wanted. They wanted PennDOT to pay for most of it. I'm sorry, you know, I'd love PennDOT to repave my street in front of my house, but they're not going to do that. So in my opinion, this is still a major issue that's outstanding, and this is a major issue that we have to get to the bottom of. And Villanova needs to produce some documents to show us that they exerted best efforts, not only in engineering but in construction, that they attempted construction.
Well, I disagree. I just want to, I totally disagree. It says Villanova will use best efforts, and it said it will be done before the occupancy of the dormitories. Radnor granted certificate of occupancy for those dormitories. These dormitories have been occupied for 20, 25 years. Now you're saying that something 25 years old, that the township, that Villanova didn't use best efforts, when the township already determined that they used best efforts because they granted certificate of occupancy for the dorms? And you're asking the burden on Villanova to produce those documents? I have to totally disagree with you. Villanova complied with this ordinance, they complied with best efforts, and it's evidenced by the township issuing building permits and occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy is not proof that this township opined that you, that you exerted best efforts.
There was no need for the township to waive it.
The person who grants a CO is not the Board of Commissioners. We don't grant COs. That's not our job, okay? There was turnover in the board at the time. Commissioners that voted for that original conditional approval left the board. So, you know, you have staff turnover, but the thing is, there was a promise. Villanova University promised to construct. They promised to exert best efforts.
They promised to use best efforts. They didn't promise to construct. And it was a joint effort between Villanova, the township, and PennDOT.
And Nick, Nick, I believe, were you the attorney on that?
Yeah, I was.
You were?
Yes.
So when you promised to the Board of Commissioners...
You keep on using the term promise. We promised to use best efforts.
Well, conditional use approval, when you agree to the terms of conditional use approval, it's an agreement.
Correct, I agree.
And, and lawyers know that best effort clause, if it wasn't important, it wouldn't be listed in any contracts. Why would we put that in a contract if it didn't matter? It matters, Nick. It matters to me, when I promise best efforts to my clients, I give them my best efforts. I don't promise them an engineering project and that not deliver it at all. That's not best efforts.
John, I'd like to know, what, where are you taking this whole argument? You, you want a tunnel now and a bridge?
You know...
You're, you're asking the university to put up a tunnel?
This is nothing new. I asked for this three years ago.
25 years ago, they...
Three years ago, I asked for a tunnel or a bridge in both locations.
So you want both now? You want us to stop the music here?
No.
And turn back the clock?
Jim, you voted on that ordinance. You should be the one that cares about that.
Stay calm, John, don't wait.
You want to stop, stop the music.
Commissioner Higgins, you voted in 1990 on Resolution 90-4 to, to demand that Villanova exert best efforts to build the tunnel at Eithan Avenue, and now you're going to be the guy that doesn't remember that and doesn't care about that?
I do remember it.
I'm the one that cares, but you voted on it.
I do care, but 25 years have gone by. We have an entirely different world. We have a campus that has changed its population distribution. The bridge that is under consideration now is a far better solution to the safety problem, don't take my word for it, I'll defer to Gilmore, than a tunnel is. People don't like tunnels. They're, they're scary to some people. The student population moves now from the south dormitories along the southern portion of Lancaster Avenue to near Church Walk and goes across at surface level. The university hired an outside traffic consultant. They took readings of pedestrian traffic at Eithan and at Church Walk. I was a strong proponent of the tunnel when this started 39 months ago. I had to go out to the site with Amy Kaminsky representing Gilmore, and she explained to me what the field trials or the field surveys showed, and that is, this is a better deal from the standpoint of safety than any crossing at Eithan Avenue is. And it all has to do with where the, where the students move today. They move to, to their classes on the western portion of the, of the main campus, and they use Church Walk as the, as the proper and safe access to that. So unless you really are going to push for a tunnel and a bridge, a tunnel at Eithan and a bridge at Church Walk, I think it's, not silly, but I think it's improvident for you to be talking about forcing this developer, who's now been waiting for 39 months for our government to approve, to now go back and do something that's 25 years old. Doesn't make any sense.
You're right. They've been waiting for 39 months, and I've been waiting for 25 years. So I, you know, we can both wait, but, you know, in my, in my life, a promise, an obligation, a best effort, when I enter into a deal with a client, I offer best effort.
Can I ask you something?
I take it very seriously.
John, where were you 39 months ago? Why, why didn't you come forward with the tunnel idea then?
I did come forward with the tunnel idea. I came forward with two bridges or two tunnels. This was, this was discussed openly with staff. Staff is, staff was recommending two bridges, one at Church Walk and one at Eithan. This is nothing new, but this is not about this project. This is about an obligation that Villanova entered into in 1990 that you voted on. Bill Spengler, I don't know if you were on the board at the time.
I wasn't on the board, but I was on the board when it was decided not to build this, and the Board of Commissioners was okay with it.
But there was, you know, Bill, again...
I'm just telling you, I'm telling you what the elected officials, I don't know what we took a vote or what we did, but I can tell you, that's fine.
They still have an obligation until we find that document.
But the fact of the matter, Villanova, Villanova did not build this with the okay of the Board of Commissioners. Now, how we did that, I don't know, but I can tell you, sitting there, that the Board of Commissioners was okay with Villanova not proceeding with this project. Otherwise, John, we wouldn't give them the building permits and all that other stuff.
But Bill, Bill, the, the, the bridge morphed into a tunnel, and that took five to six years before that was canceled. By then, the dorms were built, okay? The dorms were built, and they were in good faith, good term to use, because good faith and best efforts go hand in hand. You, you execute best efforts in good faith, and they in good faith told us that they were going to continue with this process and build a tunnel. Well, by then, the dorms were done, they were built, students were moved in, the board turned over. Commissioners that were on the board at the time left the board, new board members came on. No one, everyone lost sight of this, okay, on this end. But the thing is, Villanova was obligated to continue with this.
We didn't lose sight of it, John. We saw this, we saw this underpass, you know?
Can I, so I interpret John Rice's advice to us as different than what you just identified, John. I interpret John Rice's opinion on this, that Villanova had no obligation to build a tunnel or a bridge.
So if that is the case, why did the solicitor at the time recommend that that clause be put into the conditional?
We'd have to ask that, I can't ask that solicitor that. I can ask our solicitor.
If it meant nothing to the world, then why put it in?
Okay, I can't ask him that. I can ask ours. And my opinion of what our solicitor told us is that that provision did not compel Villanova to build a bridge or build an underpass. It compelled, compelled them to go down through a process, and you can, we can argue about whether the process was achieved or not, but, but I don't see anything, and I haven't seen anything provided to me that I interpret to compel Villanova to have built a bridge 25 years ago or an underpass 25 years ago. And, and if, if it's out there, I want to see it. I'll read it, but I haven't seen it.
Well, same here, and that's what I look forward to understanding between now and the next meeting.
In general, a condition irrespective of its age, that has not been waived or formally dispensed with, remains in place and remains enforceable.
That's in perpetuity, by the way.
That's a solicitor's opinion, and I don't agree with that at all.
And it's also, it can be, it can be regardless of its age, but it can't be regardless of its ambiguity, right? I mean, if, if, if the, what, the fundamental difference that I have with that interpretation is, I don't see the initial, the, the initial requirement that some of you are seeing. I, I see no initial requirement, so I don't think you need an affirmative action from an elected body to take a non-action. I think you need an affirmative action to take action. But in this case, I don't, I don't see that, that the township has to waive a requirement because I don't see the requirement as ever being into the, into the resolution or the plan. Sorry.
So, well, you know, I always ask that, that our solicitor advised the board with case law and examples, because I did my research, and what I found was that the best effort is a legal term. It's not an English term that we use every day. It's a legal term, and it means something. It really does mean something. And quite frankly, if you don't exert best efforts when you're performing in the contract, you haven't performed. So quite frankly, you know, we can argue all day whether or not it had to be explicit or not. To me, a condition of approval of the 62 acres of the West Campus was that Villanova was to construct a, a bridge over Eithan Avenue, across Eithan, and also, it sounded like, across Eithan and across Lancaster, to get the students off the corner. And that is not what happened. So we can argue all day whether they applied best efforts, but we know is what did not happen, is that the bridge was never built, okay, or the tunnel. So, I mean, we can argue that all day, right? But it wasn't built.
People concede that it wasn't built.
I heard the developers say they spent a million dollars on engineering.
So then they clearly took it seriously in the beginning, right?
But that's, best efforts?
Okay, so...
That's not best efforts?
No, that's best, and, and the, and the resolution said very clearly, they must apply best efforts at engineering, best efforts at construction, and they didn't construct. They did do best efforts in engineering because they designed it, they, they produced it, but I haven't seen the plans, but I understand they exist. But what I don't see is, when I walk down the street, down Eithan Avenue, I don't see a bridge. I don't see a tunnel. So clearly, something was left out.
I think there's no, there's no question that there is, there is an element here that remained unaddressed from a prior development in the same area with the same board, the same applicant. And I think that this needs to be addressed, and I have not been convinced that there is no longer, that the need to, to construct this improvement has been obviated.
So Nick, would, is, can you, is there institutional knowledge there that you can go back and you can recreate some of these?
We'll see what we find.
And then you can make a, a presentation to us as to how that unfolded?
Don, I'd have to see what's out there. I really don't know at this point.
Isn't it also incumbent upon the township to do the same thing?
Just remember, though, the ordinance says best efforts, and the ordinance says prior to the issuance of a building or occupancy permit, an occupancy permit was granted. The, the condition did not need to be waived, it was met. That is why an occupancy permit was granted.
What year did you issue the occupancy permit?
94, 95, 96?
Yeah.
Chris Kavalsky with Villanova University. This is not something new to us. We've been looking into this for a while, and it's been a concern, it's been raised throughout this project approval process. And I don't know what we can provide that, that we haven't already shared with you, at least in summary. It's, the institutional knowledge that we have, for the people who were working on the project back then, they don't work at Villanova anymore, same with the township, same with PennDOT, there were three parties as part of this project, and I understand there, there was no bridge there. I've seen that intersection as well, there's no tunnel. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's Villanova's fault alone that it didn't happen. There were two other parties as part of this, and there must have been some mutual agreement between the three parties to change the situation at the intersection so that a red light scramble and two left turn lanes, east and westbound, were installed to address what the significant concern was. Our records don't have any of that in writing, and it sounds like perhaps the townships don't either. We haven't been able to track down people at PennDOT who can provide that history. So I'm not sure, to Commissioner Curly's point, to what end. What, we can come back and talk, have the same conversation in two weeks, but we're not going to pull up some magic document other than the engineered plan for the tunnel that we have and can show you. I don't know what that will do. What's missing is what conversation happened that allowed for that intersection issue to be satisfied with a red scramble and east and westbound turn lane.
I think that two weeks will help. I know there's some citizens out there that are trying to gather that information also.
We have, we have our file, but it's correspondence to us and from us. So we're happy to share what we have, but it's not going to be the balanced, multiple-party representation that is reflective of what that agreement was. But again, just because a bridge or a tunnel isn't there, doesn't mean that it's Villanova's fault alone that it didn't happen.
Well, we're going to have trouble on this end because the township manager at the time is dead. The solicitor, Eugene Evans, is dead. I know our township...
He's still here.
Our township engineer Duncan Hubley might have some information.
I have no message.
Have you? Okay. And our township Public Works manager Dan Malloy might have some information, so we should...
He was in Public Works.
Oh, he was in Public Works Department, so he, he might have some information. We ought to try that.
Yeah. I'll call Duncan again, too.
So is it time for public comment?
Sure. Public comment? So you know public comment?
Jane Gally, 7th Ward, Barclayton Road. I would ask Mr. Curly, have you ever been at that intersection when you're trying to turn onto Eithan Avenue at, say, 3:30, 4 o'clock, 5:30, thereabouts? Have you ever driven through that intersection, ever? Okay, well, if you have, and I live in that area and I do it every day, first of all, the traffic now is back down to Spring Mill Road, and it's back down to the McDonald's in the other direction, I mean, on Lancaster Avenue. The traffic the other way is only not so bad because no trucks can get under that bridge. So my question to you, and the, and the, and the other thing is, if any of you have turned onto Radnor Chester Road off of Conestoga Road where they have the setback, where you're supposed to stop here, well, try doing that when someone has pulled all the way up to the top because they got to see what's up there, or they got stuck there because they didn't make the left-hand turn. It's impossible. It's, it's ridiculous. And to have trucks that are going to be coming off of Lancaster Avenue, probably either west or east, coming down Eithan Avenue, trying to make that corner, it's going to be impossible. First of all, they're going to make it, they're going to be in the other, other lane, and you're going to have accidents. And I, I'm sure the police department, it's, it's bad now. It's going to be ridiculous when they're delivering goods and services... when they're delivering goods and services to this new building. I'm just saying, common sense tells you, you need to, having a 50-foot setback, people aren't going to do it. They're going to be up where it is now or as close as they can get to that first so they can ram off that, that green light to make the left-hand turn onto Lancaster. They're going to do it. And that's, you're going to have big fat accidents. And my only other worry is that you're going to have students there. And what's going to happen to them is they're going to get plowed down. Now, you guys maybe can live with a dead or, or maimed student, I really can't. Those things have to be considered when you're making your decision about what's, about the turn lane. I don't, or the turn lane or the 35-degree, you know, foot one, those are, those are the bottom lines. Those are traffic accidents and damage to children. And that's where my whole, that's where I come from in this area, besides the fact, it's a nightmare on that, in that intersection now. It's a nightmare already and it's only going to get worse.
Rickley and Hardy, 30 All One Lane. A lot of this is going to sound awfully familiar, I'm sort of shocked that so much of the conversation is going to, has prefigured what I'm going to say, but essentially, I'd like to just say, I kind of consider this to be my concluding remarks, but maybe this conversation is going to go on. This project represents a tragic wasted opportunity. While I suppose credit must be given to the present management of the school for a game attempt to move the institution forward, this dorm complex fails utterly to address Villanova's real difficulty. What ails Villanova, what dooms its every attempt to be a unified coherent campus, what keeps it from becoming the first-tier university aspires to be is that it has a highway cutting it in two. Crossing Route 30, Lancaster Avenue is a several times daily fact of life for a sizable portion of the Villanova student body, conservatively. On any given ordinary day, students will make 14,000 crossings of this busy state roadway. 10,000 of these will be at the Eithon Lancaster intersection. Realizing the circumstances was unsustainable and aghast at a long series of pedestrian injuries due to automobile traffic, including a fatality, the leadership of Villanova University 25 years ago determined to do something about it. They proposed first a bridge at Eithon Lancaster. When the practicality of that idea came into question, they returned with an even bolder plan for an underground concourse. I believe these leaders were in earnest and that they fully intended to put an end to a threat to the lives of their students and to the viability of their institution. So serious were they that they tied the realization of these projects to the approval for West Campus and then, when that didn't pan out, to the St. Augustine Center. But these men ran out of time and have been replaced by people with other priorities and an irreplaceable opportunity to solve Villanova's fundamental problem is about to be lost. The Eithon Lancaster intersection will never be more open, more free of building encumbrance than it is right now. It will never more resemble a blank piece of paper on which an imaginative plan can be drawn than it does right now. There will never be as good a chance to propose a bold solution to Villanova's real difficulty that it has a highway cutting it in two than exists right now. To allow the CICD to go forward as proposed will end any hope of an intelligent answer to this problem will simply expose more generations of students to injury or death by automobile. Should Villanova be permitted to build dorms on Main Line? Yeah, please, absolutely. But students have been living away and driving to class at Villanova for over half a century. My dad did it all four of his undergraduate years and he graduated in 1954. Another few years spent to free Villanova once and for all from the daily menace and the continuing liability that Lancaster Avenue represents will not be wasted time. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Need to vote to table, don't we?
What? No.
I move that we, do we need to table this, John Rice, until the next meeting? Is that appropriate? Yeah, so I'll move that we, we table the resolution until the first meeting in May.
Second.
Public comment? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Proposed? Passes seven to zero. What's that? Y. Oh, you know, I'm sorry, then, six, zero, one abstention.
Mr. Chairman? Aye. Mr. Chairman, if I may, would the board consider holding F until the next meeting so that when you have Biomed, you'd have the same discussion? I just asked Steve and he'd be okay with that, if you'd like to.
With what?
The item F, hold this until the next meeting when Biomed's up in May, so that the two go together or do you want to discuss this this evening, still?
The way it is right now, you're, we're going to have Villanova approval, Biomed, and Ratu on the same night, again.
So, my question, Bob, would be, I thought we gave clear direction, so I guess you want to comment on, on what Steve provided us, is that it?
Correct, correct. So, I mean, Steve's here, so we'll go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, that would be the last item on public works and engineering. This is the discussion of a draft planned laboratory office amendment as prepared by Ratu, and Mr. Gabriel's here.
Point of order, I don't think that we ever removed the other item from the agenda.
Yeah, the president of the board at the start of our meeting tonight said it would not be considered.
Yes. What's that?
The president of the board tonight, at the start of our meeting, said that it would be removed from the agenda.
Biomed.
Biomed.
Yeah, that's all.
What was the question?
His, his question.
Oh, so, all right. So, do you just want our feedback from what you provided? Is that the idea here, Bill? Do you want us to just provide our feedback to what Steve provided?
Sure, if we have comments, do you have any to say or we're just going to comment on what you provided?
Well, you received, you received the proposed draft amendment and a cover memorandum and maybe just for the benefit of the audience to indicate to, to everyone, the amendment that we put together, based on a lot of previous township discussion, a lot of resident meetings that we had here, there's a town hall meeting and face-to-face back in the fall, there are a number of provisions within those regulations that we're proposing that are very similar to what has been discussed in previous township discussions. The amendment is aimed to guide redevelopment within the PLO zoning district for the future and it is intended to apply to all properties in the PLO zoning district. It's a, it's an overlay proposal to add mixed-use development with a number of different kinds of uses allowed under that heading and to enable then for those uses to complement one another. But in all of this, the mixed-use development use is still a choice, it's an option for property owners. It's not, it's not something that's required, but if they do choose to pursue a mixed-use development, then the regulations that are contained in this amendment would apply to that development plan. The regulations for, as, as they stand right now within the PLO for office or laboratory would still remain subject to any revisions that the board would feel are necessary as we go through any discussion process of the mixed-use development. And I'll, I'll make two other points quickly and then certainly be glad to take feedback. One is that throughout those township, throughout those resident meetings that we had, we heard two things. One, traffic needs to be addressed. And we've tried to do that by tying development density to trips that are generated by development. The other thing that we heard was, we'd love to continue to have as much green area within these sites as possible. And so, we've actually reduced the amount of lot coverage that would be allowed within this proposal and created a front yard buffer while still enabling, through a trade-off, through increased height of buildings, to allow for reasonable development on those sites while creating more green space. So, that's a very quick overview, be glad to talk about any particular, specific items within the proposal or take your feedback, answer questions.
So, I have a couple. The, the six-story element of it is going to be difficult for some to accept. So, how do you propose ensuring that that six, that allowance of additional stories does not increase traffic? I'm assuming that you're going to use the traffic neutrality provision to try to establish a baseline and essentially, instead of a three-story flat building relatively broad and flat, you're envisioning something that can get smaller and tighter and go up as long as it has less traffic than the baseline plan?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I just have, again, this is a consistent concern of mine, the item where, what you're calling capacity improvements. So, to me, the capacity improvement is the traffic reduction and not the intersection, so it's similar to the conversation we had with Villanova. I'm troubled by improvements that are going to involve turning lanes and expansions and things of that, that sort. I don't know if others have the same concern. To me, I want, I want alternative capacity, not capacity improvements, because capacity improvement is generally going to mean more capacity for vehicles and that's, to me, that's not the solution. So, things like, I mean, the, the capacity alternative, like the access to the public transit, the bike lanes, the paths, things, things of that sort that give people who want an alternative to a vehicle, a method of coming to the site. So, other than that, I saw it as generally consistent with the instructions that we gave you and I didn't see anything in it that was objectionable.
First, let me say bravo. I, I was really, really thrilled with this first draft. I, it incorporates all of the things that we've been talking about and hearing and I think it is a first step towards something that could really be useful to us in, as we face redevelopment of our PLO district. I have some logistic questions that I just need clarification on and most of them have to do with the traffic neutrality clauses in Section 4 Special Regulations. So, well, first of all, the traffic neutral, the trip generation that you would use is based on existing buildings. So, and it's either the all-office use of the existing building or existing building as it exists, whichever's greater. But what about a site that's not built out? So, if there's a site that's not built out, there aren't existing buildings where there could be, which I think we do have at least one property that's that description, they would have absolutely no incentive under this because they're not, they would get much more out of going to their build-out capacity rather than building a traffic neutrality to what their, their, their lack of capacity. So, that didn't make sense to me. Go, answer that, yeah, let's do that one first.
Yeah, it might be helpful. We, we looked at all seven sites and tried to do some sketches on some of those sites using these regulations or these criteria. We also looked at the sites for the existing PLO regulations. What we found was, under the current regulations, it appears if, when you apply the setback requirements, that as many as five of the seven sites, for all practical purposes, can't scrape a site and build it according to today's PLO regulations.
So, they're already at their capacity of building coverage?
Well, the setbacks, in, actually in a couple cases, the setbacks overlap, so there's no room actually for a building. In other cases, they, they come almost to an overlap position such that the size of the buildings that, that could result in a very small building envelope or footprint would, in all practical purposes, probably not ever get built that way.
And so, for the two properties that are not built to capacity, you said there were five of the seven that are like that?
Five of the seven that, that probably wouldn't build under current PLO regulations. The other two are the two largest sites and there's still room, applying today's PLO regulations with those setbacks to be able to build something on those two sites. So, so one, one part of my answer is to say that right now, under current regulations, while someone may be underdeveloped, they are very possibly unable to build at all under the current regulations to build anything new.
Uh-huh, okay.
But then, what, what I was, what we were trying to do is provide a consistent standard, something that was fixed. I mean, we've had, there's been a lot of discussion over the past three years as to what a by right plan is.
Right, right. No, I get, I get that and I think that's smart.
And that's, and then when we look at the PLO and, and see that it really won't work for most of the sites, that's also a problem. But six of the seven sites right now have office use.
All office.
And, and what we try to do is then say, okay, for the one that doesn't, if we, if we assume that that's, that the existing space had office, then we've got something that's solid on the ground, we really can't argue about what's there and we can start to provide a baseline that's predictable for people.
I get it, I, I like that approach, it's much less murky than a build-out and what could they build out and I, I like it. But getting to the actual, like, the underlying concept of traffic neutrality, I had to read this like six times to really figure out what, what it's getting at and I'm not sure I like what it is saying. I mean, it's saying you have to either match or do better, but you can just match the traffic, rush hour traffic of what the, the current all-office use is. So, what, what do we gain from that?
Well, what, what, what we're trying to do with that is, almost as the term says, neutrality, we, we provide for no more than what currently is out there, no increase, no more than what currently is out there. And then, the regulations also propose that there will be no credit given for any kind of interrelationships of uses on the site that would result in people not being able to move from one building to another or from one portion of one building to another portion without getting in their car. Someone who's staying at a hotel, who's a long, you know, a long-term employee at a satellite location, it doesn't have to get in their car to come to the office, as an example. So, those, those interactions, as well as transit use, either coming to or leaving the site, then also helps to reduce the traffic in vehicles. We've had a lot of discussion about how much does it, does it reduce it? And I don't know that there's really considered agreement on how much it reduces, but I think we can all agree that at least to a certain extent, it does reduce traffic in vehicles. So that by not giving any credit there for this, for this equality or neutrality calculation, then we can say that, okay, and then, because we're using mixed use, because we're near transit, we expect some of the traffic counts to come down by virtue of the use of the transit, by virtue of the interrelationship of uses. And so, we will actually see less traffic. We don't know how much, but we will actually see less.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't follow that logic for the transit because you're not moving the site, they're still next to transit now and they, they, so whoever's using the transit would be using it now if they're using office now, anyway. I do see the interrelated uses, but I don't think that number is as, as great as the transit number anyway, which we decided was only 7%. But, but my point is, so what I was hoping is that the bone, you know, the, the carrot here for the developer is they get to have uses, they get a lot more density, they'll have more square footage to develop under this, if they spread it out. So, and I am willing to give them more square footage and more height if they take, if they, they build a building with uses that are going to have, it's going to have traffic between 10:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon and in the evening. But I'm only willing to, to consider all of that extra traffic during the day and in the evening and the six stories if at rush hour, I get less traffic. So, neutrality or even neutrality minus the bonus for the, you know, the 7% or whatever, at rush hour, to me, just doesn't seem good enough. Like, it has to be better at rush hour. And then, take all, take what they're losing at rush hour and spread it out and I'm fine with giving them a bonus and, you know, have more, more use, more square footage that you use at night and during you use at night and during the day. But I just, I can't, it loses its luster if there's still 600 cars coming in and out. And, you know, that, that's, that's what we're trying to avoid. And, and the carrot that we're giving them with all of this other ability to, to have these other uses and have all this extra square footage should come with the stick of, except you have to reduce rush hour traffic by 10% or whatever number is, seems realistic. Because then, then that gives us, you know, okay, this is something worth, worth giving up something for. But the actual, you know, true neutrality at rush hour is very unexciting and unappealing to me. So I just wanted, you know, that's my comment about it. I would be doing backflips if we could get all of that and less rush hour traffic, not equal rush hour traffic. The other thing I wanted to say, and I'm not sure who, who we would look to this for, you or our staff, but while we're analyzing this, I mean, at least for me, and I know for many people in the public, we're, we're going to need to see some, some analysis of actual sites. And obviously, the most obvious one is, it would be Biomed, since we have all these numbers already at the ready. But it's one thing to look at this in, in the abstract and say, these are great ideas, but I, I hope that we can get some concrete, well, this is what this would mean if they used this and they used all 75% office and whatever, and what, what the square footage would look like if they used it to the maximum. So I'm hoping that as we progress along, we'll get that sort of analysis.
And the analysis would be much more on the way of the traffic generation versus square footage of different uses as opposed to actually seeing a drawing?
Right, exactly.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay. Yes, and we certainly intend to do that.
And then my last comment, this is getting a little ahead of ourselves, but I just wanted to put the, plant the seed out there. When we progress a little bit along here, and especially after we have sort of that build-out analysis of uses and square footage, I think it would be interesting for us as a board and also for our public to, to have some input from Carfac on the economic impact difference of these two different types of developments. Because in, I, my intuitively, I think building all office under our current PLO versus having an, a multi-use park with different uses, I think for our township economically, the latter is going to be better. It's my, I, I don't know that, but I, I think Carfac could figure that out. And especially if you can take that economic incentive and pair it with better traffic at rush hour, it's, it's like a win-win. So I would like to see if that bears out. And I, I hope that as we progress along that, and I think Carfac is interested in doing that as well. So that's something I, I'm hoping that we'll get, and I'd love my colleagues to weigh in on that. That's all I have to say.
Can you repeat that again, that last part again about, you like your colleagues? What, what was it?
About whether you'd be interested in hearing from Carfac about the economic impact of these two different types of zoning, you know, what development under these two different types would have, the difference and the impact.
I think that's a broad scope for Carfac. I don't know how they would, would be able to do that, honestly, but...
Well, that's an ideal situation, but I think if we're, if our goal is to reduce, you know, traffic impacts, then we may have to not be concerned about economic impact. I mean, ideally, we know what the impacts are other way, but you kind of got to maximize the site for one or the other, in my opinion, but hopefully we'll get both. One thing I, I was thinking was, so we're, we're, we're basically, we'll go bigger picture here, we're talking about adding new uses to the sites, to this area, and, and in exchange for that, we're allowing higher heights, you know, I'll call it condensed density. So, you know, we're allowing more kind of the same density, but on these lots, but they want, we want it to go higher, right? So what I would, what I would recommend, and I haven't read through this enough to understand if it does this, but I would recommend that if we want to incentivize certain uses, that we only allow the higher heights for those uses. And the point is, if you allow the higher height and someone says, well, great, I'll just put in a small, little boutique apartment building here, but I'm going to go six stories up with an office building. So we really don't, that's the unintended consequence. So we want to incentivize what we want, we want to de-incentivize what we don't want. What I think, Commissioner Shaver, to, to your point, I think this, this new ordinance, the one thing it gives us opportunity to do is to, to require under approval that incentives be put in place, not just bicycle racks and, you know, better access to the mass transit, but financial incentives to the tenants and whatnot to use mass transit. We are talking about 7% with no incentives, but if we drive incentive programs through these approvals, I don't know if we can legally do that, but we've talked about this a lot. If there's any way we can require that as a condition of approval, then what we're basically saying is 7% is not good enough, we want 15% to 20%. And the only way you're going to get that is if you basically pay for it. Somebody's got to pay for that, and you'll get a higher utilization. So, hey, they're my only two comments right now, but trying to tie the heights to the uses that we want, that in fact do have that beta in traffic, you know, so that 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM use time, that's tied to the heights. And otherwise, we're just going to have taller office buildings with the same old, same old.
And we have added, we have added uses to the list of mixed-use uses that do exactly that, that spread the, spread the peaks and, and fall on times when most, most of these other activities don't.
So, but, but can we, do you think we can tie those new uses that in fact create those opportunities to the taller heights? Meaning, they have to have these components to qualify for the higher heights?
It'll be, it'll be something that, feedback on, on, on preferred uses would be helpful in that regard.
Yeah.
Certainly, as far as the, as far as promoting the transit use, helping to subsidize the fare is certainly, when, when you, when you hear about folks, employees particularly, who use transit, that's the way they got involved, or first started using it, was somebody was able to help them with the fare, they got used to the predictability of the, of the route, and so then that convenience factor of having the vehicle kind of went away. But it really did start with incentivizing the fares.
And can I just say, what, your concern about the mix of uses and, you know, making it all huge office, I, I know it's a lot, a lot to take all of this in, but for sites of 10, the way this is drafted, if you choose to use this zoning, you can only use 65% office if you use it, if you're 10 acres or more, and then the rest has to be some other use. But your, your point in the other use...
So I'm trying to flip the table there, saying, well, you can only, if, if you want to do office, if you want to do office only, then only, you know, as, meaning, well, let me say it a different way. If you want to have that office component, then only 35% of it can be office, and then all the rest has to be something else. So, you know, if we really want to change this site, I mean, this, I kind of went through this in Garrett Hill, if you really want to change the pattern of development, you really have to flip the paradigm altogether. You just have to say, you know what, all this stuff we used to do, we're not going to do that. If you want, if you want to take advantage of these new higher heights, the higher densities, and new provisions, then you need to do X, Y, and Z. And, you know, maybe simplify the ordinance to that degree. Is the, the underlying PLO is still going to be there? This is, I forget, is this going to be an overlay or...
It's an overlay, yes.
It's an overlay, so the underlying zoning code exists. If they want to do PLO-style development, they can continue that. Therefore, they're not, none of them are non-conforming then, as long as they're conforming to PLO. But if someone wants to put in a hotel, they get to go higher because they want to put a hotel in. They get to go higher because they want to put, I don't know, maybe a school or something else. You know, the point is, we want to incentivize that difference.
So Steve, as I understood it, the, essentially, it's a substitute, a substitute use, and you would have a select menu of allowable substitutes, and only the substitutes that, that produce the traffic pattern that Elaine identified would be allowable. So by definition, as, as I interpret it and want it to be, it can't get any worse. Because if you take office and office use becomes your baseline, and you substitute, let's use residential as an example, the building might get physically bigger, but the traffic pattern will have to do what Elaine just said. The traffic pattern will have to flatten and smooth, or other way around, fill in the gap. So to me, that's how you address the issue, by having a, a small subset of uses that are complementary to the currently allowable uses, and then by definition, it has to get better from a traffic perspective.
That's correct, yeah. And the, you know, office and retail would be the most intensive traffic generators. Multifamily, senior living, hotel have, are less demanding of traffic or trip generation during those peak hours, because they start to spread and have different, different travel patterns that then complement. You have, you might have more square footage, but no more traffic. And that's, and that was, you know, by and large, the feedback. We've got to do something about traffic, so we try to make the ordinance density tied to the traffic, that we could guarantee in the ordinance that it's tied to traffic, not, not a particular square footage that we hoped would be traffic neutral, but that becomes, traffic neutral becomes the standard as, as described right now.
Steve...
I mean, if, if there are, if there are uses that we want to incentivize, you're getting kind of into a comprehensive plan discussion about really the philosophy and the style of development that is appropriate on these seven sites. And certainly, an interesting discussion, but the, the mixed use is still meant for office to be the primary use, complemented by these other uses because of the way that the occupants interact.
Steve, I was curious if you looked at under-parking the site as a way of driving more transit carpool, you know, for trip reduction?
Well, the, the, I mean, the, for the, for the residential, at 1.2 spaces per unit, it's, that's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Conversely, we're still, I think, from, you know, from our experience and certainly from property owners' feedback, you, you still have the sense that, that the real estate market has a particular standard of a certain number of parking spaces in order for it to be marketable to tenants, regardless of the, regardless of the transit use patterns or what your ordinance requires or doesn't require. So that, you know, we can, we can have 1.2, or we can have, you know, three and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet, or whatever it might be for office, and yet they will still want to build more than that. So what we've, what we've also, with the reduced lot coverage, is, is pushed parking away from surface parking and into, into parking structures.
Right.
Steve, consistent with John's idea, I think you could, I think you could eliminate the parking in residential, because the parking in the residential is a natural complement to the parking in the, in the, in the office space. So consequently, those are like flip-flop users. I think you could have, set it, like, to me, you set a parking maximum, eliminate the minimum, set a maximum, and then allow the residential parking to use the office parking when it goes home at the end of the day. And the building might get bigger, like we said, but the traffic pattern would be smoother.
Yeah, well, and, and there is a provision in, in here for a reduction of 25% of the parking requirement if the applicant is able to demonstrate exactly what you're talking about.
I mean, I would even say maximums, too, consider that. I don't know if others feel, but to, to me, if, maybe that speaks to your point, John, that that's an inversion. We're fiddling with the minimums, but really what we need to do is invert it and set a reasonable maximum.
Couple of things here. Appreciate the effort on this, Stephen. I know this is something we've gone back and forth on quite a bit. I, I must say that still, at this point, I'm, I'm very far from sold on the need for a must, and, and this one in particular, I don't, I don't think it really has changed much since, since we started this, but I think that it really does seem to be spot zoning initially. We said it ourselves, five of these seven locations at least, and I would say six out of these seven are really not going to be interested in this, depending on how the things, this is really designed for one, one site, and we know which what that is. But I also think that we're kind of trying to put lipstick on, on a pig here, because it's a, comes, it stems from a misunderstanding of the goals of the PLO. Now, the planned laboratory office zoning is unique to the second ward, my ward. All seven of these sites are in my neighborhood, within a mile of my house. And, you know, we talk about, in other, other circumstances, stormwater, for instance, oh, that's all about the town, we collect the money from everybody, we're going to spend it on every place but the second ward, because it's for the town. Here's something where we're continuing to talk about economic impact, but we put it on the backs of the second ward. This is a second ward issue, and it's designed to drive revenue for the township in, in our neighborhoods in the second ward. All seven of these are right along Lancaster Avenue, right just outside of the neighborhoods in my, for my constituents would go from Upper Gulf all the way to the corner of the, the township, down to Lancaster Avenue in Villanova. But the misunderstanding, I think, stems from why, why are we even looking at the PLO? The PLO, for some reason, people are saying, well, we need to reduce traffic. We do need to reduce traffic, because the PLO was never intended to be a business-intensive, high-density zoning ordinance. 1993, we know what, where the, where the PLO came from. The intention of the PLO was to provide attractive, quote, "large-site, low-lot coverage development in areas where traditional business development would be inappropriate." All of this extra density is traditional business development, and we, the whole goal with the PLO was to be not a, a place for traditional business development. The PLO was to diversify the township's tax base and should be compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. The PLO, therefore, really should be something that we're looking for less density. And I'm, I'm looking here at the zoning map near my house here and along Lancaster Avenue, and think about what we have in the second ward, especially. What did we talk about tonight? Villanova, $350 million project. We have 771 Lancaster, which is being built right by the interchange, that's a commercial zone, of, right by the interchange of the, of the Blue Route, and, and the large development behind that. We also have our old Radnor Financial Center, as well as all of these PLO-zoned areas, which go from the Radnor Corporate Center to, off of Matson Ford, all the way to this location closest to Lancaster Avenue. This site cries, there we go, this site cries out, and you can blow it up around that area there if you go on the upper right-hand side. You see on the upper right-hand corner right there, that's my neighborhoods, that's my people right there. The PLO and Villanova and these other locations separate the, our neighborhoods from the rest of the township. At people like Elaine and, and others that are down in the lower part of the township, they have things like view sheds and, and arthros and open space. We have our neighborhoods and the PLO, which is bottling up our neighborhoods. But I get back to the point, the PLO was never designed for a vehicle for more intense density, for more traffic, for larger buildings. It was designed to be low lot coverage, large sites. It should be working towards lower density. We're going exactly the opposite. And also, we're doing it in a way that's very suspect, because it's, it's obviously going to lend itself to a... going to lend itself to a charge of spot zoning for particular, for a particular developer. Now, I, I talk about uses that we have here, and I think Elaine also made a very good point. We really need, I mean, these are abstract provisions listed out in a proposed ordinance. We need to see a lot of modeling and understand how they would impact the different sites and how they would impact the township as a whole. So, I mean, every one of these provisions that you have really should have, in my view, it should have, here's the provision, and then references, and what is its goal, and how does it accomplish it? And we could do that for every single line item that you put in here, and I think that that would be well worth it. So that it's not abstract, that we, we tie some purpose to it, other than generating revenue, which is all I've heard that we're trying to do, trying to generate revenue, as if we don't have enough revenue, as if we don't have enough development. And, and one other thing I'll, I'll mention is, we're also going to be faced with the development of the mainline health and, and that location off of Radnor Chester Road. So, we have a lot of development along Lancaster, and that caps in our second ward neighborhoods. I see, though, that we, we now, the, the rec, the rec center seems to be something that's, that's raised, it's, it's come back, it's been resurrected in, in this version. Was that something that you intended to have a specific meaning, or was it just kind of a throwaway?
No, actually, actually, that was a response to our town meeting and planning commission feedback for a, a community use whose traffic would, would fall outside the peak hours, especially in the afternoon, and could have activities in the evening, and rather than fall, rather than having activities on all the school fields at the same time that everyone's trying to leave work. So, that was actually responsive to resident request.
Yeah, I, I was at those meetings, I don't remember hearing that whatsoever.
Planning Commission, it was discussed.
Yeah, well, the planning commission also, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that they have the great concept of this either, but the rec center, I think, has a specific meaning and a specific use, and, and I, I don't believe that that's an item that would be supported.
That could be removed immediately. So, tonight, Steve, you can take that right out of there, because if you think that was suspect, it was actually brought up at the planning commission meeting, so that's where it came from. So if you think it's suspect, you can remove it.
I don't, I don't recall.
I just want to make it clear that it's not the staff, so if you think it's suspect, take it out.
Don't react to one commission's comment.
Let's, let's go ahead, take it out, then, that's fine. Second, I noticed that, I guess, one of the questions was, we have, and one of the, a couple of other folks talked about the fee. It appears that off-site improvements would no longer be a part of this if you paid the fee. Is that the intent of the, the way you drafted this?
Yeah, the, the intent of that fee is to, is to put together a dedicated trust fund, much like a park and rec fee does, and enable then the township to package improvement projects, be of whatever the nature might be, within the same travel area that would benefit each one of those seven parcels, and enable then projects to be put together that were comprehensive and integrated in a way to maximize impact, improving traffic conditions. Rather than piecemeal, project by project, you'd have a lump sum of money to work with.
Well, we wouldn't, because we only have just, just one, seven, you can see them right there. If you look, you can blow up, why don't you blow up the PLO zone right there, which is right about, if you just move your cursor down, just move, just move your cursor down, just go down, and, and the toolbar should come up. Well, all right, just hit, blow that up. So go, go up, up to the top, 100%, go above 100%.
Okay, you want, you want to try and do that?
While you're enlarging that, just as a point of reference.
Yeah.
There was so much traffic that came out of the Biomed site that the police department was actually hired to get traffic in and out of there in the morning, and then at the rush hour in the evening then, too.
So, so take a, you can see right there, the light blue areas are the, that's the entire PLO that we're talking about. So, we're not going to establish a trust fund from this, we're going, this is for one site. It's all, all concentrated right there. And the fee, I guess, what we, what we said about the fee is it's traffic impact, a trust fund, but there already is provisions in the code for the establishment of a traffic impact fee. I'm not sure that this complies with that, or that it would even be legal. And, and I guess, it, it seems kind of arbitrary what the numbers are. The Biomed site, for example, we know that the owners paid $100 million for it, and they recently have appealed the value to somewhere around $30 million. So I'm sure that, to get a, a value of up, closer to $100 million again, they would be, be willing to pay a lot more than, than what this fee provides, if that is the goal, to squeeze a certain developer. But I think that the claim that this is a trust fund, and it is dubious, and that if we want to have traffic impact, that we would do better to follow the existing provisions, or go with a higher fee than what you have there. I don't, I think that that's, that's selling the additional density in my neighborhood is very cheap, and I, I think that it's, it's, it's worth much, much more than that, and, and it's worth not doing at all, is what, is what the.
Rich, do you, can you give us an idea how, how much longer you're going to be talking?
How much time do we have? Probably about 44 more minutes. No, I'm, I'm wrapping up. I would be done much quicker if people wouldn't interrupt me.
Nobody's been interrupting you.
Well, you just did. That's an interruption. So, now, again, this is particularly important to me and to my constituents, and this is a, a radical deviation from what we've had before. And it is something we just saw, I mean, I just saw this last Thursday for the first time.
Right.
And so, and it's, and it is very, very involved. So, one of the other issues that I see in this, so these are just some initial thoughts as we take a look at this. But what I also notice on here is, for the smaller properties, it's not really a, a mixed use. If you have a smaller property, you can use one use, so it's really could be conceived, conceivably be a change in use. It's not even close to the PLO as it was. It's can be, you can elect the, the PLO, the mixed-use overlay, and then use one use if you have a smaller property. So again, I think that's inconsistent with the goals and with the, with the function of the PLO. So those, those are my, my major elements, and, again, I would point out, this is really our neighborhood issue. It's, it's not broad enough to have impact, and I think that we're misplaced to increase density in this location where we should be seeking lower density and more neighborhood-friendly, and of course, less traffic, not traffic neutrality, less traffic, and, and to follow the intent of what this PLO was originally designed for. And finally, parking structures. We know, again, in 1993, what the goal was. The goal was to have no parking structures, other than to remove surface parking. So, that's, and that was in the face, and we know what it was. It was, the Radnor Corporate Center had just got approval for a, a new parking structure, and the intent was no, no more in the PLO, no more in this area here, and to make it consistent with Villanova, with the Radnor High School, and to not make it a new business, like the Wayne Business Overlay. We have a business unit that's up on the upper left-hand side. We have the planned business unit right there with Radnor Corporate Center and across Lancaster Avenue. That's our business area. Business areas were not intended to go in that light blue. It was lower density and bucolic, campus-like, low-traffic areas. So, I'd like you to take us back and rethink it utilizing those, those comments.
Well, it's, just, go ahead, yes, go ahead, Jim.
I don't have anything to add to anything that's been said.
Okay. I was just going to say, the, you know, the, the intent of, the intent of that low, you know, low lot coverage and not dense, not intense, that's why the traffic neutrality plus the transit reductions will result in less traffic. That was the aim all, all the way along. And the proposed lot coverage here is at 45% versus the current allowed in the PLO of 55%. So we were listening to what you were trying, what you, the points that you've been making, Rich, all along.
But, but just, just on the, on the parking and the traffic. Now, think about it, what you, what we've inculcated here is the concept that you're allowed to have full office, which no one, that's really not, you're allowed to have 100% office on the site we're talking about. That's never been the case. The, the office building that we have right there has only about 800 spaces. We have pumped up on steroids the number of, of parking spaces and, and traffic you can put in there, and then said we're going to make it neutral. We should be, starting from the 800 and going down. It's, it's a completely different concept. The traffic neutrality is not an aid, and, and I don't think many people believe will actually become neutral. It won't be neutral. It, it will be worse, or just as bad, if we're lucky.
Does any member of the public want to comment on this? Oh, boy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Diane Edbrill. I live at 205 Spruce Tree Road, just around the corner from the PLO district. I, I want to say thank you to the commissioners who have given this proposal their thoughtful attention, Commissioner Schaefer, Fissure, there have been, and Booker, there have been some very thoughtful remarks, and I really appreciate your, certainly the commissioners who are not from the second ward, you know, your willingness to be, you know, be sensitive to our concerns, and I, I really do appreciate that. One thing that jumped out, because sometimes I follow what's going on with the Delaware Riverkeeper, is the 35-foot riparian buffer, and I'm sure if Maya Van Rossum were here tonight, she'd be jumping up and down, talking about more than that. So, at the risk of, of sounding like Maya, I think we should, you know, have much wider riparian buffers, and I think the science supports that. But really, for me, what I want to talk about is the parking, because it's, it's the parking that's going to drive the traffic. You know, that's what it is. And in, in section five of this proposed ordinance, Steve put together, you know, referenced the rest of our zoning code, you know, parking formula, which is the, you know, the 50,000, it's at this, this rate for office space, it's like, whatever, one spot per 200 feet, one spot per 250. Why don't we just not, you know, why don't we put in a whole new formula and just say, like, one spot for 500 feet? You know, if what we really want to do is reduce the amount of traffic that we would have under the, the by-right zoning that currently exists, why don't we just say, you can't put in this many parking spots? You want to develop it, you want to go up, you want more square footage? Great, but you're going to have to take the risk that you find visionary clients and tenants who will come to this site, not in their cars, you know? I mean, maybe it's as simple as a formula, if you want to increase your square footage by 20%, you have to decrease your parking spots by 20%. Now, a lot of developers will say, we can't do that, it's not economically feasible, and I say, okay, then don't do it. But if you want to do it, then this is the way to do it. So I would really suggest that, if you're, you know, if you're going back to the drawing board, put in a new formula. Don't use the same old formula. The same old formula is, is what's going to kill us all in the second ward along King of Precious Road. Do a new formula. You know, make it denser, but, but limit the cars. That's the bottom line. You know, I'd be okay driving by, seeing a six-story building on any one of these sites, really, as long as there were fewer cars coming every day. And we have the ability to do that, because there is the public transportation that serves this area. If we were going to do an experiment here in Radnor Township and say, what can we do to improve traffic? We have to do something different. We have to think outside the box. And so that is my recommendation, is forget about our parking formula, let's implement one that really does something to limit the cars that come onto the site. Thank you very much.
Any other comment?
Good evening, I'm George Brosman, representing Brandywine. That is the number one largest property owner in the PLO district, so wanted to be here this evening to say that we have seen the ordinance, but just recently, and look forward to reviewing it, and will be reviewing it, look forward to the process. Also wanted to say that Brandywine has been in support of mixed use, so we think that's a good concept, and support that, because we do see it as a way to address the traffic concerns that we've had. I think a lot of the discussion tonight has been focused on the traffic aspect, should it be traffic neutral, should it be something less than that? We'll have to see how that plays out. That obviously is one of the key elements of it. Under, under the prior ordinance that was considered, for what it is worth, just to give an idea of, in order of magnitude, Brandywine did have a planner do a plan for the, the Biomed site, and that did show a mix of uses, and it was done under a different formula than is in this ordinance, so it wouldn't necessarily be applicable to this. We'd have to see how this plays out, and we agree that there should be studies done. But I think, bless you, the plan that was looked at had a mix of uses. I believe there was a hotel on there, and multifamily, and of course, some office. I think the office was approximately 225,000 square feet or thereabout, so that was an iteration under a prior ordinance of what some concept of traffic neutrality could be. So we look forward to seeing the process unfold with this, and do support the mixed use idea. Thank you.
Okay, so Steve, the next step on your chart that you gave us, after this draft amendment to the Board of Commissioners, was Board of Commissioners introduces amendment at regular meeting. And I don't, I mean, I think it's not really in ordinance form at this point.
No, it's not, it's not in formalized ordinance form, because we don't know what form it's going to take, there's no sense in us putting it in that format yet.
So, we can't introduce an amendment that's not, I mean, what, what does this suggest? That we would introduce?
You could, you could refer this document for review by the Township Planning Commission, as well as the County Planning Commission.
Without actually introducing an, an ordinance?
Correct.
What, what about getting some additional documentation? Again, I think that every one of these provisions should have a reference, should have a, a goal and what its intent, and how it, how it, how it achieves that. But especially references, so wouldn't that be appropriate, especially with a, a change of, of an entire zoning district?
If the, if the full board, or the sense of the board is to put together a breakdown like that, we certainly could. It's not the typical approach.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, I think that would generate, that, that would be a large work effort.
I think it would be, but again, I think that that's kind of what, what's, what's called for here.
But I think the, on the onset of this process, we determine what the goals were. You know, the goals were to create a zoning ordinance that would produce traffic neutrality and encourage, encourage mass transit. So, I don't want to say we're going to assume that everything in there is going towards that goal, but I would, I would think that, when I read through it, it seemed pretty obvious to me what elements of it were toward that goal.
Well, again, I guess, I think that there, something like this calls for some kind of an objective description as to how it actually achieves that goal, because I'm, I'm not sure that it does. And I also, for the record, don't believe that I subscribed, or at least opinion remained divided, as to what those goals were, at least on my part.
So, my, my, when I was suggesting that we see an, an outlet, like a build-out in So my, my, when I was suggesting that we see an analyt, like a build-out analysis, I was thinking, I was really saying more illustratively. So, you know, an example of how this would play out on paper, not the building itself, but how the numbers would play out. In my opinion, you know, I mean, right now, we kind of have to decide what's gonna happen next. I think it would be helpful to have one or two or maybe three analyses of what, what this might look like, and with one of them being on the Biomed site, because that is the one that is most pressing. And keep this moving forward. I would like to see the Planning Commission's comments on this. Even though it's not in ordinance form right now, it has all of the aspects of an amendment that we would make. So I think, my opinion at this point, even though we haven't introduced an ordinance, taking this amendment form that you've given us, asking for, sending it down to Planning Commission and having them give their comments, with the caveat that I think their comments will be much more informative if they have something to look at that's an analysis of how it would look in real life, an illustrative one, not every single case scenario. So that's, that's what I would suggest.
Are you talking about modeling this such that you want a quantitative modeling?
Yeah.
Okay, but I think to get the quantitative, you almost have to do a, you, we did this in Garrett Hill. We had to take the zoning and apply to all the parcels to, to understand what the maximum build-outs of each of those parcels would be under the, under the new zoning. And, you know, and, and max, because no one builds the minimum, they build the maximum. So you find out what the maximum envelopes are, you find out what the maximum densities are, if maximum parking and all this and that, and then, then you end up with these chip, trip generation numbers. Is it the trip generation numbers that you're looking for, or is it the economic modeling or?
At this point, what, mostly trip generation, but it's, I mean, some of it's spelled out. You're gonna have either 65 or 75% office. So if it's, if it's 10, if it's 10 acres or more, you're gonna have 75% office, and if it's 10 acres or less, you're gonna have, I think I did that backwards, 65%. So that, that's kind of your anchor.
So Steve, you'll be able to, using those, the constraint, not the constraints, but using, using the parameters of the, of the ordinance, you'll be able to calculate that maximum build-out under the new zoning and what that would translate into in terms of traffic revenues, potential revenues. You know, I don't know where we get these numbers, but.
That's not, not revenues.
Okay. So just, just the impacts on traffic. And I, I, I think it's also, I mean, I don't know, the technology's really advanced, but I'll tell you, the 3D models really help. And that, that can be really expensive. It could be really cheap, too, but, you know, Google SketchUp was the way we did some of this stuff. And, but I remember, we, we did it in Garrett Hill, and it was profound to show people what you could build under the current zoning versus the new zoning. And it was really interesting, because under the old zoning, you could do this, but under the new zoning, you could do this. And we did street-level 3D models just to see, to visualize what it would look like. And now, maybe these sites don't matter so much, but I, I think one of the things I'm seeing, though, is that, we, we talked about parking, and I don't want to go regressed to this, but, you know, one of the issues, and Bill Spengler brings this up a lot, you know, if you reduce the allowed parking, what you could end up with is, the unintended consequence is parking in the neighborhoods. Now, there is no parking in the neighborhood at Biomed Site. It's too far away. But those other parcels within that zoning district could definitely have an impact on the neighborhoods. And if you underpark those areas, then you may run into, so we may have to be cognizant of that one issue on some of the parcels, and maybe there's some way to mitigate that. I don't know if it's a distance thing from neighborhoods and this and that, but it gets very technical.
So I have, one of the concerns I've had with this process from the beginning is, I, I think we're going down a path that's making this very complicated, and I don't know, I think we're gonna be the ones that become unhappy with the output. And so I did not interpret this as, like a draft ordinance. I determined, I, I interpreted this as, these are the sort of tools that you're going to use to try to come to the end. And to me, this is much too complicated, and then the instructions that we just gave to the Planning Commission, in my opinion, are a little complicated. To me, the next step is to take this and coalesce it down to a page. And if we can't, if we can't make sense of this in a page, if we can't decide that this page is better than the baseline, then we don't approve it. Sensitive to Rich's concerns, I'm gonna have a tough time looking at this, determining whether it's better or for worse. I, I want a page, and then we'll make that determination. And then, to me, these things, all of these conditions are kind of like triggers. Like, to John's point, a trigger that would allow this to happen would be the, the spillover effect. If you have spillover, then you can't have this kind of trigger, because you drive the parking down, people will park in the neighborhoods. But on sites that aren't gonna have spillover, parking spillover, then you can have a trigger that allows that kind of flexibility. So to me, this is, the next step is looking at this, finding a manageable number of triggers and a manageable number of control variables, and then putting them into a page that might work but can't get worse, and then we would make a determination as to whether we wanted to approve it.
And the page would contain what?
Triggers and new conditions. And part of, and part of, like, if you have uses, if you have uses, you have baseline uses, and you allow new uses that are, by definition, better, then you can't make the, 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 the site any worse from a traffic perspective. You can only make it better. Like, if you have, if you have 65% office and you allow, you allow residential to drop that 65% to 50%, then you can't make the site any worse from a traffic perspective, because the, the traffic pattern is, by definition, better than the baseline. The buildings might get bigger, but the traffic pattern can't get, can't make it worse. And so that's, that's the part we're control, we're picking the variables to control, allowing other variables to slide in one direction and controlling the direction that other variables slide.
I didn't understand that. I, I, I have to say, I mean, I think that's what this does. I mean, all those things you just said are in the amendment you just gave us, so I don't...
All right, fair enough. So then the breakaway for me is gonna be, if, if this is five or six pages like it is now, I don't think any of us are gonna be able to determine whether it's effective or not effective.
The ordinance amendment, so really what you're talking about is, is condensing, getting away from the ordinance setup and narrowing down a page of information for the, for the board's use.
Well, let me, let me, let me just say that if, if all you...
What we don't allow residential in this now, correct?
In the PLO?
In the PLO?
No.
Is that correct? So if you allowed residential, if you took everything else and you kept it the same, and you allowed residential, then the traffic would, by definition, have to get better from, from, from what we're all calling problematic, and we're hearing the community tell us. The buildings might get bigger, and if you did that one thing, you might, it might stay the same, nobody might use it, or it might get better. But it would clear, we'd all be able to, to confirm that the traffic would not get worse. And as you move toward what you have, what you've provided here, it becomes harder and harder to determine if the condition will get worse or better. And I'm gonna have to be somewhere in the middle. I'm gonna have to be complex enough to think that it's working, but simple enough to be confident that it's not gonna make it worse.
So, so taking what Elaine has said about traffic counts and what, what particular mix of uses will generate what traffic counts, you're saying you keep that real simple to say, one change results in perhaps more square footage but less, and less traffic, and here are the numbers to show that?
Yeah. I, I mean, it's, it's 1107, I hate, but, but my sense is that you're gonna do that from the traffic generation manual, meaning that...
Correct.
Meaning that the, that if, if you take out office and you substitute residential, you, it's the traffic generation, not, not a complex analysis by an economist...
Right.
That tells us that it's, it's a, you just look at two numbers in a manual, and you look at the distribution, and that second distribution is preferable.
Yeah. And we had to make certain assumptions within those percentages that are in the ordinance as to what would be the mix.
Yes.
And, and, and also a determination of what's marketable.
Yes.
In terms of combinations.
Well, again, the residential component, I don't think was one that was favored by the, the comments that we provided. Residential is not something that's necessary and does not diversify our zoning and development base. We have residential all over the township. But again, what I, I think is more, even more important is, it's, it sounds like you want to develop a new zoning ordinance, is going to want to make every one of these sites, scrape their site and rebuild under the must. And that should not be a goal. Why would you want, we wouldn't need to worry about spillover into the neighborhoods unless we think that Brandywine is going to tear down their buildings and build a new high-rise complex and, and all-new parking to maximize what they can do for the site. I think that would be a horrible goal and detrimental to the overall lifestyle and benefit of the township.
Where's your word want to go? Where? So I, I, what I would, here's my thought. I would like to see this come back to the board at the next meeting, and at that meeting, we should vote to send it to the Planning Commission or not send it. And hopefully by then, we will all have reviewed the ordinance and decided what components we would like to keep and which ones we don't want to keep. And then we send it to Planning for their opinion.
Amendment, because there's no ordinance to set.
No, I understand. So, but we want to decide on the elements, so of, of, I know it's not code yet, but the elements of, of the zoning, of the zoning overlay.
So like, come prepared to the next meeting if there's something you don't like to advocate to get it out.
Yeah, yeah, the idea is you want to leave it out, and, you know, I'm just gonna stress that this takes a long time. This, as much as we want to get this done in three or four meetings, the guys from Garrett Hill in the back of the room right now are saying, you took us five years, you know? The point is, it takes a long time, because you really have to try to get consensus. I think an executive summary-type, single-page, I like the idea, but at no point did we ever get to that. That's a panacea. I mean, I'd love to get there. But anyway, the next meeting, we bring it back. By then, I, I, I will personally go through this ordinance line by line and things that I don't like or am concerned about. I'm gonna ask and either ask it to be striked or changed, and then we all should try to do that, and then, but we need to get it out of this, out of this board and get it to the Planning Commission.
And send it to Planning. That's what you think the next...
It needs to go to Planning, yeah.
Well, the problem is we got Villanova in Biomed next meeting.
Well, then we wait till the next meeting. And so, you know.
All right.
I'm okay with waiting two meetings.
Steve, do you think this is possible in a, in a, in an amendment that is a page?
No.
No?
Not, no. And, and quite honestly, there will, there will need to be, our recommendation would be that there would need to be other changes within the zoning ordinance for the township to make this all work. To the PLO underpinning base regulations as well as other aspects of the zoning ordinance, so there are not internal...
This is a zoning overlay, which is a whole process, and then it's also an amendment to an existing zoning dis, zoning classification. So that's a big deal. This is a big process. This is multiple hearings, multiple trips to Planning. If we're gonna do that, we would just have to accept the fact, set the expectation it's gonna take three more months just to get it out of here in the final form to the point where it's getting, you know, reviewed by Delco Planning and Radnor Planning, and then we, then we get into a hearing to pass.
But let me just point out, I mean, it is only seven properties. So it's not like Garrett Hill where you have, I mean, I, I'm, this is going to take time for sure, and it's complicated, but it's a lot smaller world than what you were dealing with in Garrett Hill.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, Community Development?
Nothing to report.
Clients and Audit?
Nothing.
Library?
No report.
Parks and Recreation?
No report.
Personal Administration?
No report.
Public Health?
No report.
Old Business?
New Business?
Yeah, I'd like to make a recommendation that we direct Bob to send a letter to the school district regarding, regarding North Wayne Field, asking, requesting their permission to proceed with Plan E of the stormwater improvements.
Under the current lease.
Pardon me?
Under the current lease.
Under the current lease.
We pay for this out of the stormwater funds, or is this a separate appropriation?
We're not...
The letter?
Sending a letter.
Sending the letter?
Well, still, the issue is even, assuming we get the approval from the school...
Yeah, but John, the, the direction is upgrade to the basin, the stormwater control basin. Right, okay.
Well, that's a sense of the board, right?
I would second it.
A sense of the board.
A sense of the board, yep, aye, aye.
Pose? Pose?
So it'll be a formal written request?
Pose, you posed on?
Yes.
Okay.
Five. I don't really care. Letter, should I be, should I lay my body in front of the township vehicle to stop it?
Public participation.
Sarah Pillen from Garrett Hill, I've sat here for the last almost six hours.
So have I.
No wise cracks. The sense that I get, having listened to all this, is the issue is about the tunnel, but it's not about the tunnel. It's whether Villanova will build the bridge. There is great, fears a little strong, but apprehension that they'll make their best efforts and they'll say it isn't gonna happen.
This isn't...
And I, shut up, Bill, and let me finish.
This isn't best efforts.
Let me finish. I think it has to be mandated that they build this bridge with a staircase, maybe even the elevator, at the Lancaster Avenue end to ask, to ask one of those kids to go out the dorm, to walk back to the railroad tracks, to climb the tower, to go across the bridge. They will not do it. Any good landscape designer or landscape architect on a college campus, when it's new, waits till the kids have drawn the paths by walking on them before they make the sidewalks. It's gonna be the shortest distance. I really believe this is what the community's apprehension is, that Villanova will not follow through and build the bridge. And I urge you to make that a mandatory thing. Thank you.
You should have no fear. We're gonna make sure they do it.
Well, but the tunnel didn't happen, and you don't have, it's an apprehension, Jim, that it will not happen, and then we're really screwed.
This is different. This is different.
Any other public comment?
Bill, if I can, just one quick item. If the board has a chance to drive down Godfrey, that road is in horrible condition. PennDOT, it's a PennDOT road. They plan not to patch it because it's under the paving program. Steve and I spoke about it today. I've told Steve, do not patch that road. It's ridiculous that PennDOT cannot come out and patch that road. Please take a ride on it. I think PennDOT should be required that they do patch that road.
Overgoad, of course.
Godfrey, it is in awful shape, and it should be something where, by the time they get to pave it, it's going to take months. I don't see why we should subsidize PennDOT. These, we have a lot of these roads. That road is atrocious there.
You got a motion to adjourn? Second? All for the favor say aye? Aye. Passes at 7 to 0.